Raymore City Council Work Session, a joint meeting for the first item. First item of two items, A and B. So, I thought we'd start this evening by going around the circle, introduce yourselves to everybody else. Many of us have served on the P and Z, so you probably know everybody on the P and Z already, but if we can start over there?
Councilman Boehner, I'm councilman for Ward 3.
Derek Moorhead, Ward 2, City Council.
Charlene Hubach, Ward 4, Council.
Kevin Kellogg, Ward 1, Councilman.
Jeffrey Stevens, Councilmember, Ward 1.
Ryan Wesco, Councilman, Ward 2, and the Mayor of Proton.
Jay Holman, Jr., Councilman from Ward 3, to Mr. Boehner.
I'm Sonya Abdul-Ghawad, and I am a councilmember representing Ward 4.
Tom Hanner, Planning and Zoning Commission, Ward 1.
Kelly Pfizer, Planning and Zoning, Ward 1.
Don Myski, I'm not sure what ward I'm in.
Joe Burke, Ward 2, Vice Chair, Planning and Zoning.
Leo Anderson, Planning and Zoning, I believe I'm Ward 3. Could be 1.[81.72][81.72](Laughter).
2, 2 maybe? Could be 2.
Get really distracted.
It changed, so I have an excuse.
Jerry Faulkner, Junior Member, Planning and Zoning Commission, Ward 3.
I'm Pete Kirkoff, Mayor.
You can call me Bernie, Ward 4, P and Z.
Jim Fairborn, City Manager.
Chip Cataract, Community Development Director.
Okay, one further item of housekeeping. If you have a microphone like this one, you can leave it on all the time. If you have one like this, turn it off when you're done, because only a certain number of them can be on at one time. Or you could leave it on so that other people can't talk. It's your choice. Shall I toss this to you, Jim?
Thank you, sir. And I'll immediately toss it to my left to Mr. Cataract to introduce the first of the two topics. And I, there had, after the agenda mailed, Councilmember Hubach on Thursday did come in with a couple of other items that she would like to discuss in front of the whole committee. I assume, Mr. Mayor, that it would be your, to open it up at the end as far as the joint meeting. Very good, sir.
Thank you. It was back at the August 4th City Council Work Session, when the Council was going over city goals and objectives that, from the Council Goal Setting Session that you had. And there was discussion at the time on one of the goals about providing or encouraging life cycle housing. And that led it to a discussion about accessory dwelling units. And at that work session, Council thought that would be a good topic for discussion at a joint meeting between Council and Planning and Zoning Commission. Then subsequent to that, just one week later, we had a resident up here at your regular council meeting inquiring about keeping chickens on residential lots within the city. And Council at that time thought that was another topic that could have discussion at each joint work session. So those were the two topics that staff prepared some information for in your packet and submitted to you, and just have a real brief presentation to go over on the two topics. Thought I would start, the first topic being the discussion of the keeping of chickens within the city limits. The code provision applicable to this topic was first adopted by the city back in 2006. And it was at that time, the Planning and Zoning Commission introduced the idea of establishing two new zoning districts for residential lots of acreage in size. So they looked at establishing what's known as our RE, which is our Rural Estate District, which are lots that are three acres or larger. And they looked at establishing the Rural Residential District, which is the RR District, which are lots between 1 and 3 acres. Before then, the only zoning classification we had was R1, which covered lots from 7,500 square foot all the way up to, we had lots as large as 20, 30, 40 acres with that zoning classification. So we created these two new districts to basically mirror the character of certain areas in our city that had, you know, that were comprised of large lots, and the unique characteristics that went along with large lots. As part of the establishing those two districts, there were provisions in the code established specifically on the keeping of animals for those lots. We wanted to make it clear within our code what zoning districts, that certain animals would be allowed in, and what districts they would not be allowed in. And so with the adoption of those two districts in 2006, the keeping of animals was, were allowed only in the agricultural and the rural estate zoning districts. And the animals were categorized as, and identified as cattle, horses, sheep, goats, and similar domestic animals were only going to be allowed within those two large acreage zoning districts. And there were limits established on how many animals per acre would be allowed. After the adoption of that code, that provision was ratified through the adoption of our Unified Development Code process in 2008. And no changes were recommended to the limiting of animals within the A, only in the A and RE districts. In 2010, staff prepared a declaratory ruling, which in essence is a written interpretation of the code for clarification. We started getting a couple of inquiries about keeping of chickens specifically. And so we looked at the code, interpreted the code, and made the written interpretation that chickens were classified as domestic animals and were only allowed in the A, in the RE zoning districts. So that interpretation was done in 2010. In 2012, the topic came up again, and we, the city had a city management intern that did in-depth research on the topic of urban animals in general, but it did somewhat specifically look at the keeping of chickens. And the intern prepared a very detailed summary document of his findings and all the research that was conducted. And that research was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission in August of 2012, and then subsequently to the Council in October of 2012. And a copy of that was included in your packet of his findings. It was at the work session that Council had in October of 2012, that after all the discussion that we had, there was no consensus to propose any changes to the code the way it currently was written. So that meant that the keeping of chickens was only allowed in the A and the RE zoning districts. Staff, we still receive an occasional call. It's less than one a month. We don't get very many calls regarding this topic. The calls that I do receive are questioning whether they can keep the chickens on residential lots, and usually it's the small lots, the, in our subdivisions. And of course, at that time is when I advise everybody that the keeping of the chickens only allowed in the A, the RE. I note the resident that inquired at your August meeting is the owner of a smaller lot. It's .34 acres in size. It's zoned R1, and so that individual, prior to the meeting, had been advised, she had brought chickens onto the property. We did receive a complaint for one of the neighbors, and that's what brought it to a head. And I'm sure that's probably what prompted her speaking at the City Council Meeting regarding the issue, that she was not able to keep chickens on the lot. We have not, as staff, had discussion with the commission on this topic since 2012. But it is the belief of staff that the initial decision that was made back in 2006, that was ratified with the adoption of the UDC in 2008, and confirmed again by Council in 2012, we believe that remains valid. The code as written is valid, and chickens should be allowed on property that's zoned A and RE. Just a couple of closing comments regarding the topic. I have familiarized myself with the codes of our surrounding communities. Some communities allow chickens on small lots, and some communities don't. It seems somewhat individualized to the community, you know, what the preference is for that particular community. We certainly don't dispute the, or question, you know, the benefits of keeping chickens. We don't think that is really the issue at hand. We understand what the benefits of keeping chickens generally are. What we believe the discussion's really about is, is the expectations of residents. And that's how I look at it. I try to look at the topic as far as what would a typical normal resident expect to see regarding land use in a standard residential subdivision? I consider a standard subdivision being one of, you know, between, you know, our smallest lot, 7,500 square foot, to, you know, maybe a third of an acre. Those are your typical subdivisions. And it's just our belief that you wouldn't expect the land use to allow, or your neighbor to be allowed, to have chickens on a lot that small. We really felt when we initially adopted the code back in 2006, that the keeping of chickens was something that needed to be done on larger lots, 3 acres or larger. That's what, the way the code was written. So we look at it more as what, you know, again, what is expected of property within the city of Raymore. It's really a fundamental issue of zoning is land use, and we feel that's what this is about, and feel the way the code is currently written is the way that it should be kept.
Thank you. Comments from the Council or P and Z? Councilmember Hubach.
I don't know whether I'm the only one that's ever lived on a farm or not, but I can tell you that chickens are a dirty animal, and I cannot see how they would make a very good pet. And I would be very much opposed to us having them in our subdivisions. I think, to me, the last page would say it all. What do you want from Raymore? And I do not want Raymore to have a chicken in every lot. I know there used to be that old saying, "A chicken in every pot." Well, that's different than a chicken in every lot. And they, they do make noise, and the worst part of it is the dust, because they will end up taking all of the grass, the weeds and everything away from the property. And then you will end up with dust, and you'll bring that into the house, and you will carry it on to other parts of the property. And there are certain diseases that we can get from chickens. And not very many of them, but one or two of them. And I'm just not in favor of us having chickens on anything except agricultural land. There's a difference between being in the city and being in agriculture. And I personally would like to see us not have any chickens at all except in agricultural land. I don't know how the rest of the, the council feels, and I'd like to hear from the Planning and Zoning is how they feel.
Chickens are allowed in A and RE, right?
Yes.
Okay. The councilmember?
I had the opportunity in 2012 to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I distinctly remember, and Mr. Faulkner will have to help me out here, but I distinctly remember what really got it started was not at home, not an applicant, but that actually we had an open-ended discussion with community development of what are some issues that you deal with that we normally don't, it doesn't normally get to us. And there was a mention of, well, sometimes we get calls about chickens, pigs, et cetera. And ironically, I had to offer a bribe because my wife wants a pigme goat, and I had to say I'd bribe him to turn down the application. But, but that's when we decided to have that as a topic. And so it wasn't due to an applicant. It was just an internal desire to discuss the issue. The intern was assigned, the assignment, did a fantastic presentation, actually. And, you know, it was opened up for the public to come and participate in that. And I don't believe we actually had anybody from the public speak on that particular issue. So over these last few years, we've not had a lot of discussion on it. I would actually, Mr. Mayor, ask, is there, if there's anybody from the public here that would want to speak on this issue, because I just have not heard a lot of, even recently have not received a lot of information for or against.
Well, and we can do that, but I'm hesitant to do that because this meeting wasn't noticed up as a public meeting where people could speak. And since we don't, we didn't notice it up, then we, you know, people from both sides aren't going to be here. Is it Councilmember Abdul Ghawad, then Holman? Or you were flagging for her because I can't see her tiny little hand?
I'm invisible sometimes. I realized that he was helping me out. I just want to say a couple of things. First off, Ms. Hubach, I can assure you there will not be chickens in every lot, because I have no interest. And I believe that there are many, many people in Raymore, who have no interest in having chickens of their own, but would probably agree that other people in Raymore should have the right to make that choice on their own, and not the, that maybe the city shouldn't be making that choice. I also might suggest, growing up on a farm, and though we didn't have chickens at our house, our neighbors had chickens, my grandparents had chickens, and we spent many weeks there throughout the year. I know from pictures I've seen that farm chickens and urban chickens are housed quite differently. I think that our experience of chickens on the farm would be quite different than the number of, the way that they're treated in the city if we were to allow urban chickens here. And Mayor, I was going to ask if Ms. Dooley, who's here that has chickens in her backyard, would be able to talk about how maybe the, some of the differences between how she houses the chickens in her backyard versus what Ms. Hubach and I experienced with chickens on a farm. I, personally, I think that this is something we should consider. When we looked at it a couple of years ago as a council, and maybe planning and zoning as well, I got the impression that there really wasn't much interest. But since it's come back as a topic, Ms. Dooley's kind of been talking to people, stirring up some people who might be interested in having chickens. I wonder if maybe there's a little more interest than, than what we thought originally.
Okay. Did you have your hand up? Okay. It's going to be you, and then you, and then you.
Well, I'm a city boy. I grew up in a two-room apartment above a bar, Ninth and Prospect. But I got to go to my grandfather's farm a lot. And I now live in an area where we have chickens and goats and everything you can name. I live out on the very southeast edge of Ward 4. I went to the American Planning Association Convention in Atlanta this spring. And one afternoon, I went out and sat, and I sat next to a little gal that was from Portland. And I got into a conversation with her, and I ended up skipping two sessions just to sit and talk to this lady. And she was telling me about how Portland had gone about, through their codes and stuff, to allowing chickens in the city, the city actively, getting people out to garden, and, you know, we have a lot of things that we bring up. But here's some basic things that the city can do to help people and to feed people, and things like that. The people right across the street from me have chickens, and there's a little black and white speckled hen that comes across the road every morning. I don't know why she comes across the road, but she comes across the road every morning.
And we could have had that question answered.[1024.38][1024.38](Laughter).
And to tell you the truth, we've had them out there for a long time, and they have caused no problems to us. And the people two doors down, they have children who can't have cow's milk. And so they have like five or six goats, and the lady's out there milks the goats twice a day and uses it for children. And I think there's a place in the city for this type of thing. And I think our REs out there are anywhere from 5 acres to 20 acres. I mean, I've got 30 cows against my fence every morning. You know, one little chicken coming across the road is not going to bother me. And most of my neighbors, I mean, we've got a beekeeper up on the hill. He keeps bees. Some guy over on Wesley's got a rooster that wakes me up every morning, which is just fine with me. I don't have to set my alarm clock. I think on the larger areas, the REs, you know, maybe 3 acres and above, that chickens and some of these animals are just fine. Now, I do worry about some of the smaller lots, and how we would control, you know, if they had one hen or two hens, or how homeowners' associations, I mean, they'd probably block these, point out, I doubt if there will be any chickens in Creekmore. So, I mean, I think there's a way that we can accommodate some people, and accommodate them through a permit system and checking some things out. You know, get some ordinances in that if it becomes a nuisance, that they're gone. You lose that right to take care of them. But as far as the larger groups go, I mean, I don't see any problem.
You know, I had an experience similar to Councilmember Hubach. You know, my grandparents had a farm, and they had chickens. And it sits in a chicken coop that I witnessed happen. I stopped eating eggs for a good few years after I saw it. You know, I can, I can argue this, this issue either way, for it or against it. But I think what it comes down to, and Jim even touched base on, is property owner rights. But if I'm going to argue for it, I could make the same argument, saying that I should be allowed to have a cow, I should be allowed to have a horse, or I should be allowed to have sheep in my backyard. I can make the same argument for it, that I've heard being used to argue in favor of urban chickens. And trust me, it's the same, it's the same thought process. I could even go far, so far as to say that, you know, if we're going to allow people to, you know, if we're going to argue the property rights argument, which I believe is probably also the same one I would argue for urban, you know, the accessory dwellings, that there should be no restrictions. So to take that to the next level, we should just remove all restrictions on the property owners in our, in our city. And, you know, because if we do have chickens, we do have the issue of maybe coyotes coming in, which it's a natural predator, and some people already have coyotes now, but we should be allowed to shoot them as we would on a farm. So we need to actually take it to that extent and say, you know what, we need to have the ability to protect our livestock and the things that we have on our property. We actually lost a council member because he wanted to move to a place where he could have a shooting range on his property. Well, if we're going to argue property owner's rights, then shouldn't that be allowed as well, as long as safety is not a concern? I mean, if we start to argue one, I mean, we can all argue and stretch it completely out, saying there should be no restrictions. So I'll let that digest.
Go on.
I'm letting that digest. Thank you, Mr. Wesco. What I do want to say, not so much favor or against, I'm going to listen to what the dialogue brings out, but I do want to comment on your ruling tonight and congratulate, or thank you for that ruling. That would be consistent with past practices. If you are consistent with that, I would much appreciate that. I have no qualms with having public input, but I firmly feel that if we're going to have input, it needs to be noticed up, because I have taken emails on both sides of this. And if the, if a certain community is, is more motivated than the other was led to believe, they could chill up and, yeah, I just see it as being unfair. So I thank you for your ruling, and I hope that you remain consistent with that tonight. Thank you.
You know, when I first moved here in 1973, we were one of the first houses in Silver Lake. So while we had a small, about a third acre lot, with the vacancy, basically had about 20 acres. And we had hutches for rabbits, we had pens for geese and ducks, and unfortunately, I have to announce that every single one of them got eaten. We had, I probably had more quote coyotes as pets than anything else. And, and, you know, so, well, that does not necessarily indicate any way I would lean. There is a certain reality of cause and effect with anything that we do with our property, I believe. I mean, and even if it's not animals, when we're looking at the issue of land use, I mean, it's, it's a, there's certain commonalities that affect everything, even to the point where, you know, homeowners that want to park Winnebago's or cars in their backyard, I mean, all these things have a cause and effect, and they affect their neighbors as well. The closeness of proximity, I think, is an important variable. You know, when you have three or more acres, you know, same issue, same nuisance, you just don't smell it as bad, or it's not as loud, but it doesn't negate the existence of the nuisance itself. So I would just really first want to say, you know, because I suspect that any application is going to come before P and Z first, you know, and I have a lot of faith, being a former member, knowing that that commission will spend a good deal of time chewing on a lot of these variables. I have a lot of faith in that. And so, and then the last point I'll make is, and this is directed at Mr. Crane toward the black hen, I must ask, why did that chicken cross the road?[1433.51][1433.51](Laughter).
That chicken crossed the road because I left my garage door open, and she found a bucket of cracked corn in mine.[1442.01][1442.01](Laughter).
So the chicken crossed the road to get to the corn. You've got the floor if you'd like it, and then Kellogg and Anderson.
I need to ask one question, because I need to know if after 30 years, I need to make arrangements to start moving. If we already have horses, and we've already had some of these animals, would the council, and when they say, "No animals on RE," do we have to get rid of all of our animals? And number two, a barking dog is a lot louder than two little hens running around the yard. If we're going to go after animals, are you going to tell the people of this town that we're going to go after all animals? We're going to go after dogs? We're going to go after cats that kill birds? We're going to go after everything under the sun? Or are we going to say, "Okay, you can have your animals, but if your animals become a nuisance, you will lose that right. But as long as you do things correctly, you will be able to enjoy your property, to have your pets, and to take care of them?"
Go on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In many cases, where something isn't permitted in the city, this directed at staff, say, like a setback for a fence, or something on that, where, I'm trying to parallel this. Those homeowners are able to go to the B and Z and ask for a variance. Would a variance be a possibility for the urban chicken issue also? You know, because I would think that it'd be set up very similarly to like a fence, or a setback of a, of a house, or, you know, something that is definitely in violation of the code. Would, could we set this up, or is it set up, to where if a neighbor is able to get that support from the people that would be affected by it, that they could get a variance?
The option to file a variance is there, because it's a specific requirement or a UDC, any requirement of the UDC can have a request to be varied. What has to be shown in the example of a fence or a setback is the same as having animals on the property. You have to show something unique about your lot. What is different about your lot versus the other lots in the neighborhood? What is specific and unique, and what it's trying to get to is perhaps, an example of a setbacks, perhaps you have a triangular-shaped lot that gets narrow in the back, so you, the addition to your home you want to add on, would increase to that setback because of the angled property line. That's a specific hardship to that lot. Perhaps the difficulty with, with chickens is you're going to have to show why your lot is uniquely different from the lot next door, the one down the street, et cetera. I think the findings that have to be found in order to grant the variance are going to be very difficult in that particular instance, unless there's something unique about a lot.
It's amazing that this issue has so many legs. Pun, pun, pun not intended, guys. But I think I heard before that it's, well, it's something, setback, it's something that I mentioned to the, to the Planning and Zoning when we're going through the GNP planning process, whereas, what do you want Raymore to be known as? And as we grow, as you can see, you know, we have different flavors that make up Raymore. You know, you have the Creekmore end, and then you have the agricultural end. So I think the flavor of the UDC, the way that it is written, written accommodates that. There is absolutely no way that we like to have chickens in Creekmore. It would drive me crazy. And again, I grew up on a farm, Lincoln, Missouri, southwest, southwest of Sedalia. So, you know, didn't like chickens then, I don't like them now. But at the same time, that we have flexibility that being within agricultural and RE zone properties, that we allow for that, you know? And again, I'm a little soft on that, because if it was up to me, I would strike that and say, "No chickens should be allowed in Raymore." So I think, at the letter of the law, the way it's written in the UDC accommodates both, both fronts.
Okay, I've got a lot of thoughts in my, yeah, that I'm not sure how this is going to come out. I too was a city boy, born and raised. However, we had a farm in Cameron that I spent over summer up there. We raised chickens, but we did it as a food source. We'd buy a gross of chicks, we'd raise them up. Every 4th of July, we'd virtually them. We had cows, we had that stuff. When you're talking farm, I think you're looking at a livelihood. It's not, "I want four or five chickens because I want the fresh eggs," you know? I think when you're looking at the urban setting, you're looking at more of a pet, or a, you know, it's something that you want to, I mean, when I moved down in Warrensburg, I mean, we had rabbits, you know? We bought these Easter rabbits, and that lasted about a month. And then the kids didn't care anymore. And I think that's what's going to happen, is when these parents... And I think that's what's going to happen is when these parents buy this stuff for their kids to play with and raise and everything, it'll last a very short time and then what do you do with them? On the second thought here, I live on a corner lot. I have to look at my neighbor's yard every time I walk out the front door. My neighbor is probably one of those that would put a chicken coop and chickens up. It's hard for the city to get him to keep his grass mowed, let alone his trash picked up. I can't imagine what, you know, and, and then when I look at it, does that, it may not devalue my house, but it would, you know, if some young couple wanted to buy my house and they stand there at the front door and they look at this yard with chickens and grass growing up and everything, they're not going to buy. So, you know, that's what I'm looking at. And there's a lot of corner lots. So if we agree, I mean, I'm against the chickens. If we agree, I think there needs to be strong language that has like an eight foot privacy fence, things like that, that's, you know, you can't see from the road driving down that what's going on in the backyard. See, I had another thought, but I forgot it. That's what happens when I.
Okay, well, then we'll come back to you when, when you remember it.
I've got, I had, I had some thoughts first, but Councilman Hubach mentioned the dirt and the dust, and that brought to my mind. I have built a chicken coop on my sister's property, Independence. It was not built in such what my dad's a carpenter, we built it, you know, as carpenters would. We did not build it where animals couldn't get in. We did not build it where rats would not get in and eat the corn. That was not necessarily what we thought about at the time. But she had a really large lot and behind her property, there was no other neighbor. You could not have hit another house with a tennis ball from there, but the dust would be pervasive into anyone's home. And the major component, speaking as a biology teacher, a major component of that dust would be fecal matter that has been powderized. So that's something to consider. As far as why, when it says here, people raise chickens, if you're raising it for fun and hobby, it says 62% here. There are a lot of hobbies that I would like to participate in, but my lot is too small, it's too close to other neighbors. My children have BB guns, they have airsoft pistols, they have archery. There are a lot of things. We have those electric model airplanes, none of which we can use in our yard. And people say to me, well, you need to move to the country and then you have the freedom to do those things. And I thought, yeah, if, if I did move to a larger place, I would not be affecting my neighbors and then it would be okay. And the other part, when it talks about people wanting to have food, fresh eggs, typically these kind of urban chickens are done in cities that are food deserts. I've worked in the inner city where you can't find a grocery store with decent produce, decent eggs, and decent meat. And those kind of places would need that. We do not.
Having grown up around chickens, I love them on my plate. I don't like to have to deal with them. I don't like to have to deal with them when I go out to my grandmother's farm. I take my dog out a lot of times when we go out and she loves to play with him. And anybody who's ever had a dog kill a chicken, you know, once, once any animal gets a taste of blood, that pet is almost ruined. So another issue that I have with it is that if somebody has them in their yard, it becomes an attractive nuisance for my dog because she loves to play with them. Well, if she jumps a fence and kills a chicken, you know, now my dog is ruined. If their fence, if, if the chicken comes across the fence, which, you know, chickens are birds, birds fly. Now you can keep a chicken's wings clipped, but if you're not on top of it, they'll fly. And it's, and it's never the people who abide by the law that we ever have issues with. It's always the people who, eh, that's optional, you know? It's just like our, you know, mowing the yard, and you mentioned that. You know, most of the people in the city have no problem abiding by that. But we know of them that, that do have that issue because we hear about it. You know, we hear about the people who have trash, which, you know, brings rats in. I mean, we have that issue because we hear about that all the time. It's never the ones that say, yeah, we're going to keep it clean, we're going to keep it picked up. It's never those people that create the issue for everyone else. I mean, if we never had those people, we wouldn't have to have speed limit laws, we wouldn't have to have laws in general. It's always the ones who decide to violate are the ones we have the problems with. And again, you know, I, I love my neighbors, but I can't trust them to make sure that they keep their, their chickens in their own yard.
I think, I think your point, Mr. Westco, is exactly why we need to have an ordinance about this. I think that if we tell people they can do it and tell them how to do it, then we won't have issues with it. I think if, we can't just say, sure, you can have chickens, but I think if we write a very specific code that includes things that will keep it healthy, I believe, Ms. Dooley, am I right? Did you say you move your pen around your yard? You don't yet, okay. I've, I've read about urban chickens and a lot of people who have a large enough yard move the pen around to stop the dust, to help keep it cleaner. They are meticulous about cleaning up the waste and that sort of thing. And so I, I truly think that this is something that if we write the ordinance with the specifics, I believe when we had this presentation from the summer intern, they do classes from the Missouri Extension Office on urban chickens so that people could go to the classes and learn how to do it the right way. I think this is something that could be really good for our city. I think if I was thinking about the flavor of Raymore, we've been talking a lot about arts and bringing in some things that we don't have here, and I think with our farmer's market, we're really trying to think outside the box as far as things that we can allow in Raymore, things that we can provide so that we have services or opportunities for all different kinds of people in Raymore and not just one certain kind. So when I think about what I want the flavor of Raymore to be, I think it needs to be quite varied and allow people to do things that they're interested in as long as we can do it without bothering others. And I think, again, if we write the policy so that it has those guidelines, then it, we could do it without it being a nuisance. And like Mr. Crane said, with dogs, a lot of us have neighbors with dogs that are quite annoying. They can be stinky, they can tear up your yard, they create paths of dirt that blow dust next door. They are very noisy. Dogs can be quite a nuisance as well, but they're allowed. So I also think something to consider are thinking about property sizes in Raymore. Our typical city lot, our lots are not very typical. I mean, if you think about the comparing a lot out in Ward Four, we have lots that are a third of an acre that are still considered a city lot. We have, I know my lot's bigger than a typical city lot, and when we were shopping for houses in Raymore and some other subdivisions, I really felt like my backyard neighbors were in what I felt like should have been my yard, you know? So saying that our typical city lot, in my opinion, isn't very typical. We have quite a variation in the sizes of our city lots in Raymore, so I'm not sure that it's fair to say what works in one city lot won't work in, wouldn't work in any city lots or would work in any city lot. And I think, again, if we write the policy the right way, we can write it so that there is a setback, which would allow for some of those teeny tiny lots to not allow chickens because there just wouldn't be room for that setback for the, for the pen in the yard. And I also think that, as you said about Creekmore, probably the homeowners association in Creekmore would overrule the code and say, uh-uh, not here. So I wonder if, you know, allowing for it as a city would open it up for some areas that don't have homeowners associations, but then the homeowners associations could take care of that in other parts of the city where they're not wanted.
I'm not going to tell you about my growing up in farms and stuff like that because until we can have gators in my backyard, I'm not going to be home, being a Florida native. Anyhow, in my typical advanced planning self, I didn't open my envelope until about an hour ago. No, it's a little longer than that.
At least you're honest.
But I will tell you this, I, I got an earful or an eyeful, I guess, because on Facebook tonight, this was all over, the Raymore page. I don't know if you guys are familiar with the page, but this was already out there. And it's being discussed by a lot of folks right now. That's why I fully expected that we were going to have a crowded room here. I had no idea it wasn't even a public hearing until I opened it and started reading finally. But I think I would reserve my decision or recommendations until I hear what the public really has to say. They just, I mean, that was all within about an hour of the conversation starting on Facebook. And there are a lot of folks that are back and forth. Everything that's been said in this room today was said on Facebook. The prey animals coming in, the smell, the noise, this and that, the size of the property, you name it, they were talking about it. So I would urge the council and the P and Z to make this a public thing. And let's see what the rest of the folks have to say.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubach, and then Crane, and then Westco.
One of the things having to do with odor is that each chicken, each chicken will produce 10 pounds of manure in a month. And one thing about it, chicken manure cannot be used on gardens and cannot be used on flower beds or, or vegetable gardens as long as it is fresh. It has to, because it will, so much ammonia is in it that it will burn the crop. So you have to have it there, you have to let it age. And so you're talking about, there's, if you've got four chickens, there's 40 pounds this month, 40 pounds next month. First thing you know, you're going to have a buildup there and you cannot use all of the manure that you've got. So I guess you, I don't know, you go around town peddling it or how you get rid of it. But I'm just saying is you need to think about that as well as anything else. Because in an ideal world, they would be able to get rid of every, all of the manure and they'd be ready to get rid of the chickens. The chicken will lay from when, when it's two years to four years, but after that, a chicken, a hen will not lay anymore, but they'll live to be, there's up to eight years. And so what are you going to do? If you're raising that chicken for the eggs, then it's not, you're going to have to keep either selling it or adding to it in order to make sure that you have enough eggs for what you want all the time. I don't think that Raymore is ready for something like that. When I looked at the, at the list of cities in the Kansas City metropolitan area that allow chickens and don't, like the, the author says in that, yes, he could see chickens in maybe Portland, Oregon, he could see chickens in Peculiar, but could he see chickens in Leewood? No, he couldn't. And said, how do you feel about it in Raymore? Do you want chickens in Raymore? And no, I do not want chickens in Raymore. I do not want pot-bellied Vietnamese pigs in Raymore either. I think that there are certain things that we can do. I'm not suggesting that everybody go to have a stamp collection or anything like that. But I am just saying there are certain areas and certain animals that do not belong in the city of Raymore as long as they are in lots that are 7,000 square feet.
But gators would be okay on RE and A, so. Bernie, you're next, and then Westco and Kellogg.
I've raised two national champion Brittany bird dogs on my place and one killed chickens and one wouldn't. I just had to train and keep the one dead enough. The, the one thing I, I got to say is that if we disallow everything that has the potential to be abused, then we wouldn't have guns, we wouldn't have alcohol, we wouldn't have automobiles, and based on a couple of previous neighbors, we wouldn't have children. If we're going to get rid of anything, let's get rid of icicles and no cyclists on the We all have our pet peeves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm trying to digest no cyclists on the highway. You know, one of the things as, as a policymaking body we have to consider is, is the city's image and, and where we're going. You know, I can remember Raymore when, where we're sitting now was a cow pasture. I mean, where, where my house is was a cow pasture. We used to run the, the cows to one end and play football there. You know, I remember that and I, and I remember being labeled that, you know, Raymore was a hick town and, and, you know, we weren't experiencing growth, we weren't attracting businesses, we weren't, we weren't doing any of those things. You know, I do think that the image of Raymore has changed over time and not that I think that we're the next Leewood or that we even strive to be because that's not even a consideration. But I do think, you know, I think when people look at Creekmore and they go in there shopping for a house of, of that level, I think there's certain expectations. You know, I think a lot of the, the houses that are, that are around here, I think there are, there's a certain expectation of people that are coming into the community to help us grow and to move in a direction. I think that there's a, a level that, you know, people, I would say most people don't expect to see chicken coops, you know, in, in some of the subdivisions. I, I just don't think that's a normal expectation. Does that negatively impact us? I don't know. But it's definitely something that we have to consider as the policymaking body. You know, I, I want to raise, I want to raise cattle, I want to raise horses, so I know that I have to move out on acreage. I mean, that's just a, a fact that we've accepted and there's a reason why we still live in a subdivision is because I don't have the money to, to buy the farm that I want to buy. But I know that ahead of time, you know? I, I knew when I bought my house that there were things that I couldn't do. And I purchased the house knowing that. So I, I don't know, I'll, I'll again, I'll throw that back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Westco's making some thoughts come into my head and I've jotted them down, so hopefully I don't forget about it. I'm going to go through these kind of in what I think might make sense of an order. One thing that I do want to say is that the reports that we get as council, we get from Gene Thompson monthly, and it talks about building permits, and I'm sure the P and Z is privy to this too, how many building permits, how many houses go up, this and that and everything else. And consistently, since I've been involved with the city, you know, the two years on the planning, zoning, and then the, the almost six years here on the council, Raymore is always leading that charge, not just in individual cities, but Cass County. The, the last report that I remember seeing, 62% of the housings built were built right here in Raymore. Now, that says something to me. People want to live in Raymore. Now, why do they want to live in Raymore? Because we're not Harrisonville, we're not Belton, you know? And I don't mean no, no, no slam to them, to those cities, because they are good neighbors. But they allow things that we don't. And I, you know, in my opinion, and, and what I'm hearing from people that I talk to is that's why they come here. That's why they come here. That's why I came here. If I wanted to live in Grandview, I could live in any house in Grandview I want. But I don't want to because I don't want to live in a city that is ran like that or that looks like that. I want to live in something that I'm proud to say that I'm able to live in and live comfortably and live cohesively with my neighbors. So that's, that's one thought process there. Now, as far as outlawing things, if we're going to get on that bandwagon, by God, I want to outlaw mosquitoes. But we, you know, when, when we start talking about things that we do allow, you know, in, in, in these smaller lots and that, the first thing that comes to my mind are occupancy permits, small businesses, okay? We do allow that to a certain extent, you know, a small business where it doesn't, and the mindset and the justification behind this was because of the traffic generated for each neighborhood, okay? And the neighbors having to put up with, you know, a, a business that's drawn in so many, and, and that's how that, there was, if I remember right, I, I served on the P and Z with you, Bernie, at that time. And many discussions were, were held around, what does this, what is the typical expectation of this type of business bring into a, a, a home, a neighborhood? of this type of business bringing to a, a, a home, a neighborhood? Daycares, childcare was very big topic of that, and we even, we got into limiting how many. It was based on, you know, the expectations of the community, of the neighborhood. So I, I totally agree with you, and I, I remember those. You know, this isn't the first time that we've had this discussion about, about urban chickens. It is a new time that we've discussed it, you know, and some, some more dialogue has come out, more in-depth dialogue during this one here than previously. But the information by, by and large has not changed. You know, it has garnered more interest and more opinions, and those are being shared, and, which I think is good. The, the final thing on my list here, you know, is I will never forget one of the first things that I had to deal with when I switched from P and Z to council.
That's called moving to the dark side.
Yeah, yeah. When I came to the dark side, there was a pile of manure. But no, I, and that's why I said that. You remember that.
I know exactly where it's at.
Yeah, yeah, you know exactly where it's at, too. You know, thankfully that pile is no longer there. But let me tell ya, I will never forget those instances, and I'll never forget how certain people in the community really reacted to that, you know? And it's, and I'm not, I'm not saying that, that they were unjustified, because I would not wanna live like that. And those people had to live like that for a very, very, very long time. And, you know, this here's something that, that, that comes up, and Mrs. Hubach made me, made me remember this, you know, with her comments, you know? What are we gonna do? How are we gonna allow, how are we going to dispose of the waste? Those are questions that, that I haven't heard, or, or topics that have come up, that haven't come up in any of the discussions. So, you know, I don't ever wanna live the, the, the horse barn manure pile ever again. And so, you know, if this does come about, that would definitely be on top of Mr. Kellogg's list, is what are we gonna do with that? You know, so let's, let's keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, Jerry, Don, and then Ryan.
So I didn't want you all to worry about me. I'm, I'm not ill, I'm just, I'm just digesting, I'm just digesting the discussion and having thoughts of Price Chopper Deli. Little, little plug there, I like their chicken. So as, as a, I guess, disclosure here, I realized, I'm not sure if we've come to this before, but I realized when I was a, a small child, I actually had a chicken and a duck. They were Easter gifts back in, you know, the dyed days, not something that would be good today certainly, but they were in the backyard, maybe a fifth of an acre, no larger than that. It was fenced, but I'm absolutely sure that Beeper and Cheaper both made very nice meals. My grandmother prepared. And I don't think it was really terribly obvious, but it also wasn't terribly painful, 'cause frankly, they got big and they got on rate, and they made dinner. But, you know, they were nice pets when they were, when they were small. I'll go on record, in agreement particularly, I, I, I agree with everything that I've heard this evening. And particularly with Commissioner Crane and Councilmember of Delgoad, you know, what I got from Commissioner Crane was particularly, this, this doesn't seem like a completely bad idea, as long as it doesn't become a nuisance. And so I think if we decided to move forward with this, very clearly, we would, we would have to have controls in place to prevent this from becoming a nuisance. And I forget who said it, but, you know, it usually becomes a nuisance from somebody who doesn't really pay attention to the rules to begin with. From, from Councilmember of Delgoad in particular, the, the comments about farmers market, and I'm paraphrasing very badly, but, you know, I think the urban chicken movement, since we, since we began to really keep an eye on this, the urban chicken movement to me is kind of a progressive. It's, it's, it's more modern, and of course, it goes completely full circle back to the good old days, when it wasn't any big deal to have a chicken coop and, and raise your own food. And I was thinking of a friend who coincidentally lives in Raymore who raises orchids. And I was thinking, okay, you know, we don't regulate him raising his orchids. I don't know if they really smell enough that the neighbors pick 'em up, but, but I, I, I'm generally in favor of less. I, I like personal choice. The challenge, as we all know, is to keep it from getting over into somebody else's personal space and, and trying to strike a balance. And, and so I think part of me, you know, and, and I'll say this facetiously, but there's, there's a lot of truth to this, I am a firm believer in inertia. And it's about like saying, yeah, I believe in gravity, but I'm a firm believer in inertia. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. If it's working well, then, you know, I'm, I'm not really terribly motivated to change it unless there's, you know, a large public opinion in, in favor of turning the battleship. Otherwise, I'd say, you know, I think our experience has been that with the allowance for chickens, et cetera, on the RE, three acre greater, I, I don't think we really have any background to, to tell us that that is good. I, I certainly am not aware that it's a problem. But, but again, there's kind of a hesitation on my part. If we're not sure about this, if we're not comfortable with this, if we do move forward and relax code and have a problem, it's a lot harder to pull back and retreat than it is simply to, you know, another one, I'm full of cliches, but discretion is the better part of valor. So I guess I'm, I'm hearing enough evidence on both sides this evening, not like a public hearing, but I'm, I'm, I'm hearing enough pros and cons, and, and again, it's probably nothing, you know, Glenn Cole did a wonderful job a couple of years ago, it doesn't seem like that long ago, presenting, but I think it was a very well-balanced presentation. There's pros and cons, and, and again, I'll loop back around, and I, I do firmly agree with what Commissioner Crane said. I think in a lot of cases, it, it probably would be fine. It's just a challenge to try to allow it without taking a chance on it becoming a nuisance, because I'm sure city staff has better things to do with their time than, than going out and trying to enforce codes, right, Mr. Catterett? I can't see, I trust he smiled.
Yeah, he, he did smile. Don, you're next, and then Ryan, and then Barry.
Well, Chairman Faulkner's gonna take me outside, and he's gonna beat me up saying this, 'cause it's going off-topic just a little bit.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, uh-huh. My question is, if we do allow the chickens, are we gonna be in this forum next year discussing rabbits, turkeys, anything else that somebody comes up and says, hey, I want some kind of farm animal, maybe, you know, goat, whatever, in my backyard, and can I do that? So I, I hate to go outside the scope of chickens, but what's next? You know, just food for thought. On the other side, the home associations, I don't know how, I mean, I was on the board with the Silver Lake for four years. Silver Lake Home Association has no teeth, none. You wanna park an RV, and, and states in our bylaws, you can't park an RV in your, in your driveway, you wanna park it there? There's nothing that the home association can do about it, not a thing. So leaving it up to the home association may or may not work, because I, I don't know if Creekmore's got teeth, but, but Silver Lake has no teeth to do absolutely anything. Is that, I mean, the last time I was there, they had nothing, so that's all I have.
I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna wrap my comments up with this. You know, I've expressed my opinion as, as an individual and as a member of the council, but, you know, as a member of council, I've been, I've been contacted by people that are against and that are for. I've had one person in favor and over twenty-five against that have personally contacted me. Now, that isn't, that isn't what I've read and what I've seen. Those are people who have actually spoken to me personally. And most of the ones who are against it, it's very strong that they're against it. But let's talk about those numbers for a minute. So we, you know, if we add up mine's twenty-six, if we add up all the comments that are made on Facebook, and then we, we add up everybody in this room, it's still not statistically significant to even be a representation of Raymore. You know, we have over nineteen thousand people now in our city. To be statistically significant, we have to have somewhere between three hundred and fifty and four hundred and fifty. So even if we add up every comment that I've seen on Facebook, we still don't raise to the level of significance. So, you know, you, anything that's on Facebook, you always take with a grain of salt, because typically it's, you know, five or ten people that are very passionate about whatever the topic is. But again, you know, e- even in all, you know, I'm going on my fourth year on council. At our meetings, you know, I never see more than, you know, at the most, maybe ten people who are passionate about a, a subject come before us. You know, I, I would think that if there is really a drive for it and a, and a, and a need and that, that passion, there would be more of an outcry. And, you know, to this point, you know, I just, I just haven't seen it, you know, other than, and again, a few conversations on Facebook and, and the people that have contacted me. But the ones who have contacted me are by far more against it than they are for.
Okay, actually, tonight has brought back a flashback after Chairman Faulkner spoke. It reminded me, every time he spoke during a P and Z meeting, I always felt like I wanted to talk for twenty minutes. I won't, I'll keep it to a minute or two, but he always draws out a lot of good material, so I wanna commend him for that.
Remind me next time to make sure you have one of these mics.
He, but, but he's brought out some very good points that, that I, that generated some additional thought for me. A- as far as what we're confronted with tonight, we have existing regulations in our code to regulate this. In addition, there is no ban, it's allowed in two different zones. So, and we're not here to, to steal that away. So we have a lot of flexibility in our existing code that will, areas to allow and areas not to allow. Now, if we wish to expand the area to allow, that's fine, and there's been some very good discussion as to some of the variables that would be considered. I do wish to point out that there's also, as Councilman Kellogg mentioned, there is a variance process. Now, what was mentioned, though, was it's the effect on the neighbors that can be, that is a variable to be considered. And that is by definition, right in line with what is a nuisance. Now, I will impart from an attorney's standpoint that it doesn't matter whether you can legally do it or not. If whatever you are doing interferes with me outside of your zone, it is a tort law. I mean, it's tort violation. I, you can be legal and I can sue you. I'm handling in a community outside of the city of Raymore the very same problem with chickens next to another person's property. The, the waste, the smell, the noise, they're getting sued because they're chickens, and it doesn't matter what's legal or not. So the, the issue of, we have the methods in place to deal with issues of nuisance, those are considered in our existing code. Our existing code allows people, some people to have them and some people not to have them, and it's very clear. So the variables that get weighed, those variables are already in place in our existing code. It's my understanding, staff in, in the initial presentation was, is taking the position that we're doing just fine the way it is, we don't need to change. So I would merely encourage, based on what I just said, that I think we're good as we are, and that if individual applications which to ask, do wish to ask for variance, that bring those issues to the table and have those considered individually. But the base code allows for the very concerns on both ends of the spectrum that have been speaking for and against.
One final thing, we already have them. We've got chickens, we've got horses, we've got cows, I even know of a pig, goats, bees, you name it. How many of you've got complaints of what we have right now? There are ways that we can handle this, there, and I agree a hundred percent with Derek, when it gets bad, then we go after them. But until then, we allow the property owner to use his property in the way he sees fit, as long as he does not annoy his neighbor.
And, and come to think of it, I did get a complaint from someone in Ward Four about a neighbor's cows.
Oh, the one that died up against my fence? And I have no problems with coyotes, 'cause they commit suicide in my pasture.
It's, it's incredible, it's incredible. Okay, Kevin, did you have your hand up too? Okay, you, you'll be after Jerry.
Am I up now?
Yeah, you're up now.
Thank you. I enjoy it. I miss those days, Bernie, I really do.
And, and remind me also, next time, to make sure that you have one of these, too.
No, I'm forgetful. What, what, what I would do, what I'm gonna ask is that staff, research, and come up with, you know, and I, Mr. Catterett gave a very good explanation as to, you know, where this might be different than setbacks and that. But I, I would ask and request of staff to investigate language that a variance-type situation could exist. And I realize that I'm asking a lot, but as, as long as, here's my opinion, that, you know, as much as I'm trying not to opine on, on whether I like chickens or not, I, I love chicken on my dinner plate. But if, I don't have a problem with my neighbor having a chicken, a goose, a, a duck, or, you know, even a, 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 a small pig, you know, the, the, the pygmy pig, I'm not affected. So I have no problem with, with my neighbor doing that, okay? But not everybody's like me. So I, I would like to see language that would allow that person, if they get the, i- i- if they are okay with their neighbors, if their neighbors are okay with it, then a, a variance process be in place.
And I, I, I'm gonna suggest that we not direct staff to do that, because you're asking them to do, to investigate how variances may be approved, without anything in front of them. Normally, when a variance comes in, there's all the facts there. Case in point, and this was a couple of years ago, Ward Four, come to think of it, a person was keeping dogs overnight for, for show dog thing, so they ended up with more than the number of dogs they could have in the area. They, they asked, how, how can we get, you know, get a variance on this? It was a very specific thing, it was, only occurred overnight. I suggest that they get letters from their neighbors and then go before the Board of Adjustment. They didn't bother with letters, all their neighbors came in and said, hey, we're, we're okay with this, so they were able to get the variance, so.
You see, and that's, that's where I'm at, Mr. Mayor, is that having a, kind of a compromised middle ground, that, you know, if, if a neighbor is, and God bless people that take care of their, their yards, their, their neighbor, their, the things in their yards, their kids, their, their dogs, all of, everything encompassed, God bless those people.
But, but we can't, we can't ask staff what will work when we don't know what's coming before them.
I, I'm just, I guess I, I'm off in utopia, you know? I, I'm sorry, but, you know, I, I feel for the people that, that we're saying no to, you know? I would like to facilitate some kind of a, a common ground that, that allows those people to do that, you know? And, and that's what I'm requesting. You know, now, am I requesting staff to do this tonight, tomorrow? No, but if this topic is, is to grow and, and go anywhere out of this discussion, that if that's an option, that if that's a possibility, let's, you know, I, I'd like to see some, a compromise.
We, we got a couple of other people that wanna talk, and I didn't see us, but you'll be after her. So we got Jerry, and then who's H? Who's H? Who's after Jerry? Hubach, and, and then Westco, and then Delgoad, and then you're next. Jerry, you're up.
I'll keep this brief. I wanted to agree with what Councilmember Westco said about statistical significance, and that jogged a thought loose. One thing that we might- One thing that we might consider to get more input and to try to get broad input rather than just the vocal minority that we sometimes seem to attract to a meeting. The city survey seems to me like a, perhaps a good vehicle. I don't remember that we've had that question on the annual survey before, but it just seemed like that would be a good possibility. If the question's well worded and we get decent feedback, that might give us a statistically significant response. And then, then we can decide if we wanna go forward or not. Just a thought.
I'm concerned about what this is going to do if we permit chickens in every lot, what this is going to do to Raymore's image. A lot of these cities that have been talked about, Portland and some of these other places, they are built up cities and they're looking for ways to do things. Raymore's not a built-up city. We're still, we've got fifty percent of our land is still undeveloped. And we're trying to attract people to come to Raymore. And I do not think that giving, telling people that they can have a chicken in their backyard is going to bring anybody to Raymore. In fact, I think it might discourage our growth because people would not, would wonder what else is going to happen that might affect the value of their property. And I don't think that it would be in Raymore's best interest to pursue having chickens in our backyard. I really think that it would be a detriment to us economically. I don't think that, I can't think of any big business that would want to come to Raymore because of it and might even decide not to. Because you have to, a city has to have certain standards. And if we're going to settle for the least common denominator, then that's what we're gonna get. And we need to keep our standards high.
You know, Mr. Crane had, had mentioned that, you know, whether or not we get complaints. And, and it's, and it's true, I, I have not received any complaints regarding urban chickens. And it's because there's an expectation that they don't exist, at least in our ward. Because currently, under the, the current zoning, I don't believe there's any property that actually qualifies except for maybe one, and that actually has horses on it. So, I don't get those complaints because people have the expectation that it's not allowed. Now, if we did allow them, I'm sure I would get complaints. Because I actually get complaints from neighbors' leaves falling in other neighbors' yards after they break them up. So, I have no doubt that if we allow urban chickens, I will get those phone calls because w- w- we get a lot stranger calls. And I don't know if I, probably not just speak it for myself. Councilmember Morehead had mentioned a lawsuit, and, and it actually reminded me of a case in northern Missouri where there was a, a pig production that had been in, in operation for decades. And a subdivision went in downwind from this, this plant. Well, they filed a suit and actually won, and it shut that operation down, even though they had been there for decades before the subdivision went in. So, just because we allow it, Councilmember Morehead is absolutely right, it, it doesn't keep people from suing for the, for the nuisance. Because, you know, as we all know, in this country, you can sue anybody for anything.
I just wanted real quick, I mean, I think it's great that we can have chickens and other livestock on certain zone property, but the issue here is on our residential property, not the RE and not the A, but the regular residential properties. And I think really the issue here tonight is that we have homeowners. I've heard from several homeowners who want to have chickens. They don't wanna have to move, they may not be able to afford it, they may not be able to take care of an entire multi-acre farm, but they wanna stay on their lot that's bigger than the average Raymore residential lot. So, it would allow some space for them to have a few chickens, their children, their families. I think that's really the issue. They don't wanna have to move to a farm, they just wanna have a few chickens in their backyard for pets, for eggs. They're not opening a chicken farm in the middle of our neighborhoods. They just want a few chickens. And so, that's why, I guess I think this isn't quite such a big deal. We're not talking about a chicken farm in everybody's backyard. I think part of, part of the reality of this issue is not everybody wants it. And that's part of what's great about it is we can allow some people to do that, to have what they want to have in their backyard, but it's not gonna turn Raymore into a giant chicken farm. I think it's ridiculous to think that allowing it's going to put chickens in every backyard. I, I would suggest that we have staff look at writing a policy that would provide guidelines for people who want to have a few chickens in their backyard that would allow a certain area of setback so that we can be sure that their yard is big enough that they can have chickens back there that aren't right on the property line, that aren't going to disturb their neighbors with the smell or the noise, with guidelines for how they dispose of the manure, what they do, how often they move the coop so that their yard isn't a big dust pit that's blowing fecal matter on their neighbor's playground. You know, I think that we can write a policy that will govern this so that it can be reasonable for those who want it and those who don't want it and benefit all of the people in our city. And another thing we could look at, if it's not just a code that says, yes, we allow chickens and here's what you need to do, but would it make more sense, instead of having it in the code, that this is allowed, to have kind of a special permit process? So that if someone wants it, they can come to the city and say, hey, I'd like to have chickens, and then we can go through those steps for some type of special permit for them to be able to have their chickens.
A question for staff, we're here based on a complaint from a neighbor, and that's what put this back into our, into our realm of discussion, correct? A neighbor complained about another neighbor having chickens, which was a violation of code, correct?
That is correct, sir.
So, how have those chickens, are those chickens still on the residence?
They are. We, we held any enforcement action and abeyance until the tonight's meeting to receive additional direction from the council.
That's what I thought that I read, and I was looking for it again, couldn't find it. If I was a neighbor and made a complaint of a neighbor in violation of a code and nothing was done about it, it would certainly make that relationship with that neighbor very difficult. If this was another issue, I, the neighbor that he mentioned about the leaves, I believe that's probably my neighbor. We both have multiple oak trees, and yes, they are a nuisance to everyone, the acorns and everything else. It's not, then I'll ask somebody else. But I just wanted to make sure that we are aware that this is someone that is currently in violation. And that, I don't, I think, I don't know if we remembered that fact. The second part, there was a, we're talking about the Facebook issue. I know this has been going on for a while because I saw this, there was a petition created about having chickens in Raymore. And so, I went to the petition to look at, see who was listed on it. And at the time that I looked, and this is several weeks ago, it was before this was, this meeting was talked about, at least I didn't know the topic, there were fifty-one different signatures. And I went through and counted, because that's the kind of person I am. I counted and there were over thirty of the, of the comments were people that self-reported, not even living in Missouri, let alone Raymore. So, I don't know if that's changed. That's something to, to look at as well. Thank you.
Kevin?
Thank you. I'll make a comment on that. I, I'll... No, not on the leaves. I, but I remember several years back, and I know Pete will, Charlene will, Jeff Stevens should, no? Yeah, you should, you, you were here. I remember getting petitions signed all the way from New Zealand. And, you know, when I hear about a petition, you know, and not to, not to slam people, but when I hear about people in uproar on Facebook or signing a petition, alls I gotta say is please bring that petition to the city clerk, have it certified so it goes to the proper people. That way, it becomes a proper petition. Unless it's a proper petition, I don't wanna hear about it. You know, and, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not slamming you at all. I, I just remember those days of getting the Mr. Lizard from New Zealand, and everybody else carbon copied his comments, and they were coming in from all over the world, and it went on for months, so that's what I gotta say.
You're right, many of the comments were from Australia, New Zealand, England. And I just counted the ones that were non-Missourians and just to throw them all in the same basket. I totally agree.
They're members of Chicken Underground.
And, and I see I'm about to lose this meeting. But what, what I've heard in general is, is keep the rules the way they are. However, I also heard a suggestion that we, you know, the public should be allowed to speak. And, and I went out and looked. P and Z doesn't have email addresses on our website, but each of... Would you like them?
Yay!
However, however, each of the council members' email address is on the Raymore website. And if, and if you have feelings one way or another, please let your council members know. The survey might be a good idea. I think if we get a lot of, a lot of comments from citizens, may, maybe we should consider putting it on our biannual survey. As for changes to the law, you could propose something to the council. That'd probably be a, a good next step if you're interested in doing that. I don't wanna task city staff with doing it because there isn't a lot of support from the council or P and Z. So, we'll move on then to the next subject, if everybody's okay? Everybody looks okay, and I don't see anybody waving at me. So, let's go on to accessory dwelling units.
I will once again ask Mr. Catterett to make the staff report.
Thank you. The topic of accessory dwelling unit, again, came up at a council goal-setting session. And, and our code was recently amended to allow for accessory dwelling units in certain zoning districts. An accessory dwelling unit, just for clarification, is defined by our code as a separate and subordinate dwelling that is contained on the same lot as the primary dwelling. And the Planning Commission first entertained the idea in an effort to try to establish locations for residents to, in essence, age and place. The idea behind accessory dwelling units in general theory, again, is to allow perhaps an existing homeowner to stay on a property and allow either end the principal dwelling or maybe the accessory dwelling, and allow a, a caretaker to be upon the premises as well. Accessory dwelling units are often referred to as grady flats for that reason, where, you know, you wanna have your, your parent move onto your property, but they still want their independence in a separate dwelling unit. So, Planning Commission approached this idea, presented something to the city council, and in February, council did adopt the Eighteenth Amendment to UDC. And we, through that amendment, allowed accessory dwelling units as a permitted use in our agricultural rural estate and rural residential district. And we specifically identified ten requirements in order to establish an accessory dwelling unit on the property. You know, I do wanna note, you know, when this discussion came forward, there was a lot of deliberation. It did have a favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission coming to council. But at city council, there was, you know, a lot of mixed feeling regarding this topic. And again, this was just limiting it to only the, you know, large lot districts. And in fact, the council vote at the time was four to four at, at second reading. And the mayor did vote to adopt that ordinance. So, it, it did go through a lot of discussion, and a lot of the discussion was whether we should even allow it on the large lots. We really didn't talk a lot about it on, on the small lots. So, there certainly was, you know, although the, from a standpoint, the idea of accessory dwellings is a great idea, there certainly are issues with, with establishing it. When we did that, we tried to adopt these ten standards to see how the code would, would be utilized. And unfortunately, there haven't been any requests for an accessory dwelling, so we don't have any history. We don't have any examples to go off of. It doesn't work, does it not work in Raymore? We do know, earlier in September of this, of this year, Councilmember Hubok, very much a proponent of accessory dwelling units, did submit a draft ordinance that I included in your packet that contained a lot of information that's already in our code, but certainly contained some additional information or requirements that could be added to our code. I believe her specific request was to allow the accessory dwelling units on, on all, I would say, all residential lots. It is staff's opinion at this time, you know, we do believe the current code language is adequate. We think the city should proceed with caution and experience how the current regulations work. We don't have a history, we don't know if what we have in place will even work. And so, we wanna be cautious before we expand that ability to do accessory dwelling units onto smaller lots. That concludes staff comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hubok, it was your proposal, I think, that was in the packet here. Would you like to discuss any of that?
I had a copy in front of me of the, the city's code, and it says its definitions, and it says what it is, but it doesn't say why we need to do it. And that was one of the things that I brought out on this, the, the reasons why we need to do it. It's a form of affordable housing and one, and it has to do with aging. And without some sort of standards, anybody could go to the Board of Adjustment and ask for the right to have an accessory building in their backyard. And we have nothing to judge by, no standards or anything. So, that was one of the things that I had brought up just as a rough draft, you might say. Because normally, when I bring up a, an ordinance, it has the wherefores and everything like that on it. But this was just something that I wanted to make sure that we had some sort of standards that we could go by so that if someone went to the Board of Adjustment, they would know, the Board of Adjustments would know, well, do they meet this requirement or do they not meet that one? Now, as far as, right now, it can only be had in our, was it R two, R, not R two, but RR and rural agricultural land. But I am saying that we need to consider having it in any lot, anybody that wants one in, if they have at least seven thousand square feet in their, their house, in their property, that they could have an ADU. If we can put a chicken in there, surely we can put our elderly parents, you know? That's one way of looking at it. So, that wasn't the reason that I, I drew it up though. But I think that there's some reason that we need to, to do, for instance, what would be the standard size of ADU? Usually, it's about four or five hundred square feet. There are three kinds of ADUs. There's the apartment, there's the attached ADU, and then there is the detached AC, ADU. In the, the apartment one, that it, when the house is built, there is a set side in that house, a place for an extra kitchen, an extra bathroom, an extra entrance, and all for elderly people. Then, they have what they call the cottages, which are the attached, which can be attached usually to the garage. Or then there is the way in which it can be done by freestanding. We don't say anything in here about what we will permit or what we don't. And I was wanting some sort of a dialogue so that we could start and have something in place because there are going to be people that are doing it. In the, in the mark information that we have, they have said in two thousand and thirty, and that's just fifteen years from now, we're going to have one in five will be sixty-five. So, that means that elderly people then will be becoming a greater part of the metropolitan area. Then, the American Planning Association goes even further, and they say one in seven is going to be over eighty-five. And when you have that, then you're having, you're talking about caregivers, you're talking about other things along that line. And one of the places in there, they said, I think it was the APA, said that between seventy-five and eighty percent of the elderly people are being cared for by their children. And so, there needs to be some sort where they, the parent and the child can be closer together and can look after each other. Because that's usually what the older folks want, is to still be active and be able to function on their own as long as they can. So, that's the purpose behind, and the main advantage to an ADU is it does not require a public... to an ADU is it does not require a public subsidy in any way. And that is something that I know that this council has been concerned about. We don't like the concept of where we have for elderly housing, a big group come in and have them kind of stair-step and then they're using credits and federal subsidies to get it. In this case, you don't have to worry about federal subsidies at all. It is handled by the family. So I was just wanting us to take a look at it and see if we could come up with some standards that we could use in case somebody did come up and want it. Because sometime in the next few years, we're going to get some requests for this. And that was just, I was just trying to think ahead.
All righty. Councilmember, where's my notes? W. Westco. And then after Crane.
You know, originally when this came before us, you know, I think Ward Two, we only had one, maybe two properties that even fell under the ADU. And then when I went out and looked at Ward Four, which is, you know, is where most of this was going to go in, a lot of them already had, you know, large sheds and things of that nature. So a lot of the properties, you know, they couldn't add anything else to it because they already had sheds and garages and things on there now. Under our current code, if somebody wants to remodel their home and expand it, you know, they want to add two or three bedrooms up the back of their house, is there anything that does not allow that to happen other than just the normal, you know, the normal easements that you have to leave on your lot?
The restrictions would be on, as you mentioned, setbacks. There are some other restrictions. Lot coverage is one we don't think about a lot, but there's a maximum area of a lot that can be covered by a principal structure. And a lot of our subdivision lots get fairly close to that. So there are a lot of lots in the city where you could add on, but you couldn't add on extensively and still meet that requirement.
Well, I guess as long as it's quick.
It'll be quick. So basically, our current UDC already allows, to some extent, this to happen. Because any lot that already, you know, is pumped up against those setback requirements, they couldn't put an ADU in there anyway. So basically, our UDC is set up to where we can address what Councilmember Hubach is kind of proposing, just through our normal process of them adding on to their home.
I think that's correct, yes.
Ernie, you're next.
I think it was about a year and a half or two years ago, Jim, that I first came to you with this. We were in the process of planning to build another home in the back of our home for my wife's 90-year-old parents. And as I started getting along in the planning, I found out, whoa, I got all this grass back here and I can't bring my wife's parents to live here. I mean, I couldn't believe it. You know, 50, 60, 70 years ago, Grandma and Grandpa lived with Mom and Dad and helped raise the children and it was a big family. As things changed through after the war, the 50, 60, 70s, that grew out of style. But I think we've come to a point economically now where we're almost going to be forced to find some way that we can bring these families back together again. The cost for someplace, I've been to Foxwood Springs five times, and my dastardly little father-in-law just is not going to spend that much money. It's hard enough getting him convinced to come down and live with us. He's very independent. My mother-in-law's very independent. But there's going to come a time that we've got to have some way to care for them. They live way up in Northeast Independence. This traveling back and forth is wearing me down already. So since so many of us and us sitting here, if you look and see how many people have saved up for their retirement, what the average amount of money they saved up for their retirement, they're not going to be able to go to any of these places. And what's going to happen is it's going to fall to the government. And then your taxes are going to go up anyway in order to support these people. So if we can find a way that we can bring Grandma and Grandpa down to live with us, we need to do that. Now, I was going to build a separate home. I have seen, well, there's one place right off of J Highway there that's got a connected place where I think the mother-in-law lives up in that connected place. You know, people that convert their detached garages with an area above for Grandma and Grandpa to live, which I would be worried about them falling down the stairs, but that's another thing. But in any way that we can possibly do this, I mean, I was happy to see what we came up with at PNC and it got passed by the deal. But as I voiced it then, I don't think it goes far enough. I think we need to find a little bit better way to do some things that we can fit Grandma and Grandpa in with the rest of the family.
Okay. First of all, I purposely built a house so my mother-in-law could not move in. But for my wife, she wouldn't even know where we lived. But, you know, I do have to say, when I was looking at our packet and looking at the agenda, I kind of reconciled our A and B under these two issues with some commonality. For example, on the issue of the urban chickens, you know, one of the things that was kind of briefly discussed was, you know, when you move here, you kind of buy into the neighborhood you're moving into. And if you want to raise chickens, you're less apt to find the most urban populated, you know, dense population area you can find. And so you have the ability to choose to live outside of that. The same thing for me goes with the accessory dwellings. You know, I live in a community where I just don't have the square footage to be able to put one if I wanted to put one. But in lots that have the ability, I mean, again, people have the right to use the property based on the criteria of when they acquire it and any limitations placed on that. Now, for history's sake, I voted no, but actually, I did not vote no to say that I was opposed to accessory dwellings. What I vocalized was, I was, in any typical fashion as a lawyer, but also as a former PNC member, I was looking through the proposal merely to say, I felt that there needs to be some additional scrutiny on a couple of these points. But even though, you know, I was on the losing side of the ultimate vote, I expressed support in the sense that, you know, I remember there were times on PNC where issues get slow and one of the topics of the night is, hey, let's reopen a section and let's take a closer look at it. And so for me, I'm looking at this and, you know, I'll take, for example, E3 in the existing code section, the accessory dwelling shall not exceed the square footage of the primary dwelling. You know, my biggest concern there, of course, I'm always looking for the loopholes, is, you know, do you get the guy who buys the property so he could put a five-bedroom house on there so he could then turn around and build an accessory dwelling with a four-bedroom house, larger than most in the community? And I do recall, we had an issue before both PNC and the council, I think it was a year ago, I had exempted out for conflict regarding some property down on Hubach Road where a family wanted to partition property. And one of the things that it made me think about with this is, is, well, isn't this a cheating way of saying, okay, if I don't want to split my property, hell, I'll just build a secondary home. I can move somebody into that, call it an accessory dwelling, and cheat the partition rules on that. And so for me, I'm very supportive of the UDC change, even though I didn't vote for it. I just, I guess I just kind of hoped out of tonight, talking about it, that now that it is in, and I think, you know, Commissioner Crane does bring up a good point, let's look at it additionally. I mean, it doesn't, it's not all done. Let's take additional looks at it. Let's look for some ways to expand it in certain ways that would be helpful. Let's look at some additional limitations. So for me, I think this is a wonderful topic that ultimately, I hope, PNC will go back and take a look at this and say, maybe there's a few sections we need to tweak a little bit now that we've had a chance to have it in place. Now the dust has settled, let's go back, take a secondary look. So ultimately, I'm in support of the section itself.
So normally, Ms. Hubach and I don't see eye to eye on a whole lot of things. But she caught me on a good day. Actually, she caught me after I'd had a conversation with my mother and father, who are in the process of moving back. And so the question that had been on my mind is, what do I do? I'm a resident Raymore. I live on a small lot. But they will need care at some point. What do I do? And so I started looking at, you know, what the regulations were for the size of lot that I had and then started thinking about, okay, I'm not the only one in this situation. The entire country is in this situation. And so it has my support. What I'm wondering is, as we look at some of these smaller lots, if we're looking at perhaps enlarging the dwelling, as Councilman Westco says, perhaps maybe a look at the buildable area on the lot, whether we can change that ratio a little bit to allow for something like that to happen on our smaller lots so the house can get slightly larger to allow for something like that instead of an accessory dwelling. And so I think there is some room to move in that. But I'm in support of this accessory dwelling issue, just based on the fact that we're getting squeezed.
So I wanted to make sure, in addition to the discussion about aging parents, et cetera, which certainly has been a personal concern in past years, but also with the bust of '08 and, you know, I'm not convinced that the job market is anywhere back to normal. But you have kids as well who can't afford to live on their own, moving back. And I think it's important to add that this isn't, in my mind, from a planning and zoning standpoint, this isn't just about accessory dwelling units for aging parents, for instance, as much as it is, you know, adult children who want some freedom to come and go and do things without having to come through the parents and, you know, hopefully fall under a little bit of parental supervision still. And if you look at it in the broader sense, then you start to see some of the pitfalls. And again, basically, I'm in favor of less regulation as long as it doesn't interfere with other people's property rights, et cetera, et cetera. And one of the biggest things that has kind of hit me as far as a concern here is the fact that if I were to build, now let's say I build a detached garage with living space above it, fairly straightforward to do, just takes money. Well, that addresses a need more immediately to, and not necessarily the stairs being a good thing, maybe we'll put the living quarters on the first floor in place of a shop. But in the long term, after the adults, after the parents have died or had to have hardcore nursing care, after the kids have gotten back on their feet and moved out, now you've got an accessory dwelling unit sitting there empty. And I think one of the biggest pitfalls going forward is now what are you going to do with it? Are we going to allow it to be rented out? You know, where do you put the boundaries to prevent it from, I'm going to say, with multifamily, you have concerns about high-density housing, a lot of cars, a lot of people in a smaller space, perhaps needing more regulation just so everybody gets along without getting in everybody else's hair. And it's a concern of mine.
I just wanted to say that I was the lone dissenting vote on PNC when this came through. And the primary reason, I think the idea is a fabulous idea. I watched a really good piece on CBS Sunday Morning about it and it was very convincing about the need for it in America. But the thing that bothered me was the part where in the RR zoning, they were allowed to build a home or a dwelling that was bigger. And that was the part where I had the problem with. Other than that, I would have been the first champion out the door for it. But I think we need to make sure that we keep it a subordinate unit and not something else that can get very creative. Thank you.
I remember that argument that we had. And when you're going to have... And the thing is, when you're going to have a smaller one and a larger one, what does it matter when it was built? You know, if I wanted to put Barb's parents in the house that I have now, and I want to build me a 4,500-square-foot log cabin in the back and set it down at the lake, what's the difference? I mean, I understood what you said, but to me, logically, if one's larger than one's smaller, one doesn't matter.
And besides, I think the argument or the discussion that evening has been settled already, right?
Yes. Well, you know, to kind of answer that, you know, one of the rationales that has been used to promote these is that, you know, it costs, you know, to have, you know, somebody to, you know, put them up in Foxwood Springs or the cost, you know, the costs are high. Well, if you're going to build an accessory dwelling that's larger than your current house, it kind of negates that whole cost argument because you're building one that's larger than the one you're living in. That doesn't exactly, it creates a disconnect, I think, for most people. You know, if you're living in a 2,200 square foot, but you build a 4,500, it's very difficult to make that, well, you know, I'm having a hard time affording. Yeah, that's... So I would think that would be one of the arguments against having a larger accessory dwelling. But again, you know, I definitely, and I guess I'm just a little, I want to make sure I understand what Councilmember Hubach is proposing. Is she proposing that we put accessory dwelling units in just our normal residential lots, you know, like mine, which is, you know, 50 by 100, that, or is she talking just about the larger, you know, the, maybe the half-acre lots as opposed to the three-acre? I mean, what size are we talking? Because I couldn't imagine somebody building another structure in my backyard. I mean, I just, I mean, I couldn't imagine my neighbors would want to see that. Now, if I want to add another two bedrooms, you know, okay, that just extends my wall, you know, 10 or 15 feet. You know, it's also a lot cheaper than to actually build a whole other accessory structure. I just, I'm curious as to what's being proposed.
Ernie?
What he's talking about, you're talking about more like an apartment within the house. Well, that's true. That's one of the three ways. The other two are cottages that would, and I think you find out that it says in there that limiting the occupancy to two to three people, so we don't have strangers coming in and overwhelming it. And so that was one of the issues. And by having a, the average lot, I think, in Raymore is 7,200 square feet. And so, you know, some of them are larger and some are smaller. Some of the smaller ones simply aren't suitable for any way that you put it. They're just not suitable for an auxiliary building. Some of them are, where you might have a vegetable garden in about a 400-square-foot area, you could put a detached building. Or you could go in through the garage and have it as an attached. There's several ways. And I'm not saying that giving any ideas is what we have to do. I'm just presenting this and saying, let's look at it and see what we can do. Let's set maximums. Let's set minimums. One of the things you're correct on, we do not want the secondary, the auxiliary, to be as big as the primary. Because that defeats the purpose of what it's all about. Because you take us that live on five acres, we could actually put 15 homes on five acres based on the residence. And so, you know, what would be the purpose? But we have also in our ward, we have houses where there's one generation living in the basement with an outside entrance and another generation is living upstairs. And so this would just more or less make it legal, what they're doing. So there's several ways in which to go. And I am just suggesting that we look at it, that the planning commission look at the possibilities of what we could do and what we couldn't do, and the council do the same thing. And we come back, maybe with some ideas, because aging is with us. There's nothing that we can do to stop it. And there's nothing that we can do to stop the fact that they're talking about one in five is 65 or one in seven is 85. It's going to happen. And so we need to be prepared for it. And the way to do it... And the way to do it, and government doesn't go very fast, in 15 years, it's going to be on us just like that. And I want to be prepared.
To me, I hear a summary of, you know, this is a perfect thing for seven wonderful people in this room who stare and look at the UDC, you know, monthly, that this, you know, that they have the opportunity to go in, reevaluate this, look at needed changes, explore the things that some council members have said. But again, it really is better suited for them to play with that first and bring those to us as we do a semi-regular amendment to the UDC. So that is my push for tonight.
Ryan, Kevin, did you have your hand up? Did I see a hand up over here? Okay. You're after him.
If that is the course that this takes, that it goes back to planning and zoning, I would encourage you also to look at traffic and parking issues. We have one situation in Ward Two that the adult children have moved back home. And there's like eight cars that all live in one house now. So parking on the street is such an issue that a fire truck can't even get down the street if there was a fire down in the cul-de-sac. So as you guys approach that, if you would consider that as an option as well, because I would think the more that we increase the population that's allowed per resident, that has to be some consideration, because streets are going to have to either be no parking on one side, or, which, again, is back in your wheelhouse.
Thank you, sir. I just had a question for Mr. Catterett, if he would entertain me. Do you get requests now, or how many requests do you get, would you say, on average, of people that are inquiring about this kind of thing, but their scenario doesn't fit under the current code? I mean, do you get that?
I've had one inquiry. To be honest.
Ward Four?
It had been Ward Four.
Kevin, you're next.
Kind of negates what I want to say. You know, I find myself reminiscing back when I was a little boy, and my dad's-
Did you grow up on a farm, too?
No, I grew up in Iowa. We didn't have chickens, we had pigs.
Oh, okay. Urban pigs.
Well, no. My dad's best friend had a lot very similar to the size of mine and a very similar neighborhood also. And back in those days, things were very different as far as codes and codes enforcement. If there was even any codes in Des Moines at that time, I don't know. You know, as I remember that, the little house in the back of the yard backed up to an alley, and it was a very small, basically what it was, was a shed turned into a dwelling with plumbing, electricity, heating, cooling. Very, very small. When I say small, I'm talking maybe 300, 350 square feet. And I remember Uncle Row and Aunt Lovey living in that when they got to the age that they wanted to downsize. What they did, they moved their kids into the house, and they moved out to the little house. Worked great for that, you know, and all of that. But as I'm sitting here reminiscing and remembering some of the pitfalls of watching Uncle Row and Aunt Lovey in that situation was, there was one entrance into the house. The windows were very small, very comfortable, don't get me wrong. It was like what I would, what we'd consider a cottage. Real quaint, real adorable little place, you know, like somewhere you'd go to take a vacation. But there was two elderly people living in that house. And, you know, that's what Mr. Westcoast just brought up and spurred in my mind there, too, is that, you know, I'm trying to envision this inside of the backyard of one of our cul-de-sacs in Foxhaven, with the added parking, you know. And when you look at Foxhaven, there's one house in Foxhaven that has a three-car garage, one house in that whole subdivision. Everybody else has a driveway very similar to mine, that basically you can park three cars on the driveway and then two in the garage. You know, so I'm looking at it that pragmatically in that neighborhood in which I live, you know, and then throw in there, you know, the, Raymore, we love cul-de-sacs, love them. And, you know, we're-
We're talking snow removal in a little bit, where we do not love-
Yeah, and I'm just prefacing that. Jim knows what I think about the, but, you know, now I'm thinking, we're talking about putting our elderly parents, grandparents, or those folks that are eventually going to need our emergency responders, you know, and how are they going to get there? That's a question that I would ask, that be explored. How would our emergency responders, responders be able to get to those structures in all of, you know, all of these cases? Because, you know, it's been said here tonight that we have a very diverse geographic and different types of properties. It's very specific, you know, even over in Creekmore, it's very different than what it is down in Stonegate. You know, so each of those areas pose a different kind of facet of the stone, you know, so that's what I would ask that, and it sounds like it's going to go back to the P&amp;Z, okay? I'm not predicting anything, but that's what it sounds like is going to be happening. But keep that into consideration, because that's where I would keep into consideration is the special nuances of each of the neighborhoods and how different each one is, so.
Councilmember Hubach?
This is just, this is a land issue, use of land, and that makes it a planning and zoning issue as far as I'm concerned. And I would like for you all to see that, especially with, one of the things that I had in my ordinance, and that I know you'll want to consider, is I build, or you build a, either an apartment, or you build a cottage, what happens when you sell that property? What happens to the auxiliary property? Can it be, how is it supposed to be used? And one of the things that I think I had in here was that it had to every year be looked at by the building inspector or someone like that to make sure that it's not, somebody hasn't come up and come in and bought up a lot of properties and is going to use it for commercial reasons. And so that's something that I think you all will need to want to address, what happens. And also about the need for separate water and sewer lines, things like that, then. Like I said, all of this is, and keep in mind that 15 years is going to go fast, so we will, I hope to still be around and being able to add my two cents to that. But I do appreciate you all being willing to look into it, because I think the things I'm interested in right now are cottages, not so much what you can do with the house, but cottages, because we do not go inside anybody's house and tell how many bedrooms they've got and how they portion that. We may have people here in Raymore that are renting out some of their bedrooms, we don't know, and that's not our interest. Our interest is making sure that the elderly who need help are getting it, and that's the land using. So thank you, and I appreciate it. I've got one other thing that has to be brought up, and Jim's going to pass that around. But Mr. Mayor, can we have a five-minute recess?
Well, you can take a five-minute recess, we'll finish up this topic if you want. I noticed people have been heading out, so if you need to head out, please feel free. It sounds like we're, Councilmember Stevens, did you have comment?
Some of these lots, where they're thinking about putting an entire house, wouldn't we need to consider rules for septic use? I mean, you have to have enough room for sanitary conditions. I know that the county does that. You have to have a certain size property to even use septic anymore, so.
Well, we, do we even allow septic fields? We do? Well, we're going to change that. Get you hooked up.
That's why we don't let building inspectors in our houses, our taxes go up.
It would definitely be a topic that P&amp;Z would have to look at as a condition of this, is exactly how is sanitary sewer, how is water going to be brought to the-
And having participated in both the conversations with the P&amp;Z and with the conversations with the council, I've forgotten which topics were brought up when, when we were noodling up all this stuff. And I remember that we had a lot of good conversations in P&amp;Z about this, and then the same sort of conversations going on in the council. I've heard a couple of things tonight that probably take back the safety issue, the sanitary issue, that Councilmember Hubach was suggesting that this is just for aging parents. I think you identified that, no, it doesn't have to be, so. Is there any other comments on this topic? All right. Is the next topic, does it involve P&amp;Z?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
And it's Councilmember Hubach's.
It's Councilmember Hubach's.
I object. I made a motion at the last council meeting to call it sunshine. So it's, you can't use the four-letter word, you have to use the other word.
That would be on the next topic, sir.
Oh, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry. Frozen sunshine.
Sir, on this particular topic that we're just now leaving, so I believe it is staff's direction to have Community Development Department begin working to have this be a topic on future planning and zoning.
Yeah, sometime in the future. We have something in place right now that is working, but, you know, there's, Councilmember Hubach has got 2011 different types of suggestions here, and we heard a couple tonight.
If I may, so I agree, Mr. Fearborn, we, we being Planning and Zoning Commission, I think we have a lot of different options to actually start this discussion formally. We do, we do an annual review of the UDC, that's one. We can bring up topics, we do have topics that are initiated by City Council that come back to us before we work them over and throw them back to you. There's many, many vehicles. Part of the question is, you know, is there urgency here? I guess I'm not really sensing, it's a topic we've certainly discussed before, worked it into the UDC. This would be an iteration or an evolution of that, so I think, you know-
I completely agree.
I think that's the word, yeah.
City Staff, Planning and Zoning Commission, we will not ignore the request, but we may not, we may not jump on it immediately.
All right, what's the next topic this evening? Because it's not on the list here.
Councilmember Hubach has asked for a conversation regarding two of our subdivisions.
Okay.
What he is passing around are subdivisions of Madison Valley and Madison Creek. And I had some questions, and I thought this might be a good time as any to take some time to discuss it.
Okay, what's your questions?
Yes, I can't hear you two words.
I said, okay, what are your questions?
I have some questions, and this is the area, you can see that it's in blue and in yellow. The area that's in blue is already developed. The area that is in yellow is not developed, and we refused, the council at the last meeting, we refused to renew their preliminary plat.
Okay.
And so I wanted to see how close that one came to being done, and wondered if we had made the right decision in refusing to let them complete the subdivision as is. And then another question that came to my mind was, this, these subdivisions are kind of in the center of town, and if they are having trouble developing, and yet the outlying area is developing, is how does this fit in with our plan, with the infrastructure and things like that? And I wanted you all just to look at it and see, I didn't think there would be any decisions that had to be made, but take Madison Creek, see how much of Madison Creek has been developed, and yet there's just that little bit that we would not let them go ahead and we wouldn't hold them. Should we reconsider? Should we come up with something else? How does planning fit in with something like this? This is, you know, if a subdivision can't or isn't moving, is there something that the city can and should do, or is there something that we need to reconsider as the problem?
Well, it seems that almost half of the new home construction in Cass County is occurring in Raymore. I don't know that there's, is, there's something that P&amp;Z can do to improve that.
What I am, I am seeing Raymore as a whole, and I am in entirety. And right here in the center of it, where we should be developing, because we've got the infrastructure around there, it's not moving. Is there some reason that we need to take a look at maybe some of our existing subdivision regulations that would make it easier for them to move? I don't know, and I just-
Councilmember Holman? I think she was.
Well, I think, as staff reported to us, I think at least part of the issue with these and a little bit of the, what you would consider undeveloped portion and lots not selling, this, one of these, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, got kind of caught up in the downturn recession of '08, '09, and then it was actually foreclosed on and then taken over by another property owner, is that correct?
That is correct, that's the Madison Valley subdivision.
Yeah, so basically you had one, in one of these, I don't remember which one Jim just said, but you had a property owner that lost it in foreclosure, was picked up by a bank. And so I really don't think the marketing has been on this property probably like it would have normally been, because the previous owners basically got caught in the downturn recession of '08 where we weren't issuing any permits, we just weren't building anything as were any of the cities around us. And then, you know, we've got a new owner here in the form of a bank, and I just don't think that they've probably put a lot of money into advertising and marketing. I think it's why you're seeing a little less development here, because you're still seeing a lot of sales in other parts, so this is in my ward, you're seeing, you know, Creekmore, Eagle Glen, like I said, forty, almost 45% of the building permits were coming out, 42 to 45% coming out of Raymore, is that right, Mr. Mayor? I think from our last communication we had.
Yeah.
So we're getting it, and granted, I don't think these are developing certainly as fast as the developer would like, but I think that's at least one of the reasons for one of these two subdivisions, Ms. Hubach. That's my opinion.
So I don't know that it's really appropriate to try to answer all of the questions this evening. I certainly am aware that City Council did not determine to extend the preliminary plats, and I think I would speculate that that was driven in part by stormwater management, stormwater treatment ordinances, and other changes to code that, you know, were being grandfathered as long as the preliminary plat was extended, and certainly the DNR encouraged us to take a different approach to that. So I think it was started by the economic downturn in 2008, certainly, and, you know, we have other forces driving us now. I will say, I'm not necessarily looking forward to seeing preliminary plats for Madison Creek, Madison Valley again, because I certainly remember that there have been two attempts to rezone part of Madison Valley to R3, both have been defeated. But I figure, you know, if you try it enough times, one of these times, there's always a risk that it'll slip through. The other thing, and you all may be as well or more aware than I am, but I do know within the blue or purple part of Madison Valley that is ongoing, that there is a lot of new activity there. So there certainly, I won't say that it's an upturn, I mean, you can look at our planning pipeline from Planning and Zoning Commission, and, you know, there's a big drop there after 2008, and we haven't really started a sharp climb again. Business is steady, but it's not great. By the same token, you know, the lots that were platted within the blue boundary of Madison Valley are definitely selling and building, so I'm seeing an upturn there. I guess I would say, you know, unless the city wanted to go in the business of developing land and marketing, which, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe we do have a small bit of experience in municipal circle with that, enough said, but-
And I can't imagine doing economic incentives for houses.
Yeah, we generally- Yeah, we, we, we generally, you know, we like to try our best to manage growth in Raymore. It's not quite as bad as herding cats, but managing growth in Raymore involves developers. And developers have their own drivers, you know, a lot of them aren't residents of Raymore. They come in with a plan. Part of that plan is to make money. What we try to do is make sure they don't leave a giant mess on our hands when they're done developing. And, and so, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think of the word. Nebulous isn't the word I'm thinking about, but it's, it's definitely not a precise science. We, we have to be quick on our feet. Creekmore is probably one of my shining examples. You know, if you look at Creekmore and you look at the Growth Management Plan, Future Land Use Map that was in effect when Creekmore was first concepted, yeah, they don't look anything alike, but I do feel very good that we, that we at least made the good decision to look at alternatives and say, well, that's not what we had in the GMP, but that looks like a fine idea. We can, we can shift gears, change course, and, and not lose control of the process completely. Enough said.
Now, just so that I'm clear, Madison Valley is currently owned by a bank, and, well, the yellow part here.
The, the yellow part, yes, sir.
The yellow part. And Madison Creek, the yellow part, is owned by a developer.
By the same developer that started the subdivision, yes.
Okay, so, of the two, I would expect Madison Creek would be closer to being developed.
Yes.
Unless banks are getting into the development business.
No.
Councilmember Hubach?
I guess what I'm, in, in a way, I'm thinking about is planning. The P and Z does not only do zoning, but you also do planning. And this would be, since this is, the City Council has turned it down, is there a possibility you might like to change the zoning in some way on it? I don't know that, what the planning that you all do, but I just thought that this might be an opportunity to bring it up and let you all know that, that's what has happened, and that there may be some other possibilities out there for you, and so that you're not just tied into one thing. I don't know. That's your all's decision, but since we're meeting and we, and I have always said that Planning and Zoning is one of the most important committees that the city has, because you all are the ones that plan our future. You're the ones to do it. You see all the businesses. We don't get to see that in everything we prove you're final, but you're the one that hashes all of this out, and this just seemed like a good time for us to meet. We ought to meet more often so that we can discuss things without having to go, you know, so late in the evening. But I just wanted you all to know about it, my concerns, and see if you had any, not to tell me there, but when you have some of your meetings, if you want to discuss it, and you had some suggestions, I myself would be open to anything that you wanted to suggest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That's what this is for. Maybe this is just for you to take home and study. I don't know. But Madison Creek seemed like it was so close being done, and I just wondered if maybe the council should have.
Well, seeing that it was originally platted.
Thought it through a little bit more.
Nineteen ninety-nine. So, they've been through a number of, what's the word I'm looking for? Extensions. Thank you. All right, good. Yeah. You should see what happens to me at nine thirty at night. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I heard Mrs. Hubach say that, allude to that we send this back to Planning and Zoning to consider changing zonings. And that, that catches me off guard, because it isn't Planning and Zoning that determines when to change zonings. It's a developer that comes in and asks, we want to change this, this R one to R three, or we want to change this R three to CE, and so forth and so forth. So, I, I, I guess that's, that's where I'm kind of concerned, is that, you know, I don't think the role of the Planning and Zoning, nor the council, is to go out and arbitrarily just say, okay, this here's going to be R three, because, or CE, or ME, or whatever, because now we're, we're dictating what can go in there, and that's actually, you know, that's part of the markability of, of the developer. So, keep that in mind.
Comments? Do we have anything else for the P and Z board?
Not unless something gets brought up to the table, sir.
Okay. We'll open it up for any discussion for the good of the, the group here. Y'all want to go home, don't you? All righty. Well, thank you all for coming out this evening and joining the council in our work session, and we'll probably do this again sometime in the future. I think it's, it's good to get the two groups together.
And, and if I may.
Please.
Just, just a very few words. We, we do enjoy this opportunity to, to meet face to face. You're obviously always welcome at Planning and Zoning Commissions. I can remember that council members have taken advantage of that. I certainly always feel welcome at a city council meeting. I, I am pretty selective about which ones I attend, so I don't, I don't really just come for the heck of it, but it, it's always very enlightening. And one of the things, and I know all of you who have been on Planning and Zoning Commission are probably like, oh, there he goes again, stuck record, but I look at this as definitely shared responsibility. We have elected City Council. We have appointed Planning and Zoning Commission, and we have City Staff. And those of you know that I always thank City Staff at the end of a meeting, and I don't do it out of habit. I, I always thank City Staff, because without their efforts, we could not do the job that we do. I, I think our job is to give things an adequate hearing and do consideration to try to make your job a little easier, and so I do watch your reaction to cases that we've struggled with. I also, in, in reference to a comment a minute ago, I also depend very highly on Mayor Kirkoof and Mr. Catterett, because I know that they attend both meetings, and I know that, that they can give you input if you want to know about a nuance, or, or something that's not in the, the formal minutes. They can, they can give you an accurate telling of what really went on at Planning and Zoning Commission, and likewise, we get feedback from them and Mr. Zerth or Mr. Willarth of what has transpired at City Council meetings. So, you know, I think I probably said earlier, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. I, I definitely am willing to adapt, change, take a different approach to things, but I'm, I'm very pleased with the working relationship and with your support. You, you obviously have the budget when, when we need to do an update to the GMP, whatever, various things like that. So, I, I, I'm very pleased with, with how well it works usually. And of course, if we have a rare exception, gosh, that just makes us appreciate those times when it works all the more. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one other final thing, and then let the P and Z people go. And that has to do with planning. How much planning do you all do? For instance, several of us are interested in annexation. Do you, as a, a body, do you ever discuss annexation and say, we would like the city to move in this way because we think for the future and the planning and everything that we would, we should do that? Do you ever do any kind of planning like that for us?
Mr. Catterett, can I, can I lean on you? You know I could answer that, but I'd rather have a, an impartial answer to that.
I think the planning that the commission does is generally through our frequent discussions of the Growth Management Plan. Of course, that whole process came from the planning commission, so the adoption of our current plan, which was just a short two years ago, less than that, was completely involved and done by the commission. But we do very frequent discussions about specific goals out of the GMP, and we look at the Future Land Use Map and other topics. So, I believe they do a lot more planning today than they did even a few short years ago. I think they continue to increase that role with development activity being a little bit less of what it used to be, you know, oh four, oh five, oh six. Couldn't do a lot of planning there. There's a lot of reaction, but now I think they do a lot of planning versus just reacting.
Well, thank you again, everyone. I appreciate you coming out. Counsel, you need?
She, she did advise that she, she had a conflict tonight with her schedule, so.
Counsel, we still have some topics. Mike, can you do it in fifteen minutes?
Six.
Oh, I'm, I'm down to ten. You got to do it in ten.
All right.
Just remind everybody we're still being televised.
Oh, wow.
Just remind everybody we're still being televised.
Oh, oh.
Okay, we're, we're still in meeting. We're a work session, I should say. Thank
Mike, the floor is yours.
I do have some handouts going around. Well, it's that time of year again, the close of the construction season and getting ready for, for our snow season, so I'll run through our typical operations plan along with some of the, some of the changes that we're, we're looking at for, for this year. I think, you know, seven to ten times a year, this is one of the most visible services that Public Works provides. You know, that's our typical average number of events that we mobilize for. We are, we constantly work to improve our service with regard to snow removal. We, we will conduct, we conduct a preseason meeting with, with the crews, and we just had that last week. We also do a postseason meeting to kind of discuss things that were encountered during the year, and if there are any, any other changes that we want to look at incorporating into the upcoming year. We also conduct a debriefing after the, after the large snow events. These are the, we consider anything over about six inches to be a large event, and we just look at that, see how things go, to see if there's any other improvements that we could do in our operations. I mean, one of the, one of the tough things during any snow event is not everyone can be first. But we do feel we've developed a, a snow, snow plan and priority route system that is as efficient, efficient and effective as possible, given the, given the, our manpower and equipment realities. You know, utmost is the safety of the public and our employees, and even though we've got a plan that, you know, and I'm going through this plan, no two events are the same. We do have a tip, a goal that to have all streets cleared within twenty-four to thirty-six hours after snow stops falling, but, you know, that depends on the type of event, the weight of the snow. Do we have to deal with blowing and drifting for a period of time before we can actually start clearing the streets? The, our typical management organization is, is laid out here. We coordinate between myself, the Assistant Director of Operations, Police Dispatch, the day shift leader, the night shift leader, and one, one little bubble out that's missing here is also the frontline people here at, at City Hall that also take, take phone calls, and so we coordinate, we coordinate with them as well. We operate on a, on a, kind of a different phase. Snow events, David, it's not too different than DEFCON for the military. When we're in, we're in green, there's, there's no adverse weather predicted. As, as we have a yellow with possible snow and ice predicted within the next twenty-four to seventy-two hours, that's typically when we begin, pick a, pick a forecast, because they're all over the place, and just see when, when they start to coalesce. But more importantly, we, based on, based on the forecast, we start pre-treatment of the roads, and we will mobilize into two twelve-hour shifts. The next phase of the event is when, you know, snow is imminent within the next one to four hours. We have crews, we have members of the crews out patrolling streets, looking for slick spots, but our real snow operations don't begin until accumulations have reached an inch or more. One, as I said, one of our, one of our real battles, especially with the perimeter routes, is the drifting, drifting of those streets, the outer, the outer perimeters where there's not a lot of development. There have been events where we've just had one or two trucks dedicated to keeping those roads clear, which really delays our response into the residential streets. Then if conditions get so severe that we need to say, cease operations for the safety of the crews, recent history, we really haven't had to do that. We came real close. The benchmark event is the Christmas blizzard. Things got real tough, real tough for the crews, but it was a relatively short period of time when things got bad. And then after that, we go into a post-clean-up phase where we're cleaning intersections and, and those type of things. We've, we've divided the city into three zones. Zone one is the north third of the city, which is one hundred and fifty-fifth Street to Fifty-Eight Highway. Zone two is Fifty-Eight Highway to Lucy Webb Road, and zone three is Lucy Webb Road to the south city limits. We've balanced the zones based on centerline miles, and each zone contains approximately forty-five centerline miles, and that equates to approximately one hundred and twenty lane miles that need to be cleared for each zone. In addition, we have over two hundred cul-de-sacs and dead-end streets, and we estimate that it takes over eight truck hours to clear, to clear all those as we're going through the operations. This is, this is our snow route, our snow route and priority map. We have developed the priority routes, which are the red and the orange routes, in a manner that our goal is to minimize the travel distance from the local roads to, to these routes. And so that typically, once they're cleared and we're working in the residential routes, it's typically one or two blocks of travel to get to, to one of the clear routes. Our typical route assignments for the trucks, the red and orange routes are, are plowed with a dump truck with a salt spreader, and we have three of those, so one is in each zone. The blue routes are the residential through routes, is a one-ton truck with either a salt, with a salt brine or a, a small spreader. And then the green routes are the dead ends and the cul-de-sacs are, are plowed with a, with a pickup truck. This year, we are going to be using and looking at our, kind of our in-house or the GPS. We've got GPS installed on all the trucks, and we will be monitoring truck, the progress of the trucks internally and in-house with, with those. One of the other things that has recently come up is the progress of the school road construction. I'm going to go back. What we are looking at potentially doing with council's permission is we are anticipating the need to devote, to devote some resources to J Highway south of Hubach Hill Road and one hundred and ninety-fifth Street, just to make sure that the, the school routes are, the school route is clear. MoDOT does not always get to those, or MoDOT in the county don't always get to those routes on the same schedule that we do. We've, we've, any time during the winter, one or two times a year, we get called out by Public Safety to treat the hill on J Highway there, south of Hubach Hill Road. So, we, worst case, we are anticipating the need to do some of, some of that.
And if I could just jump in, Mike, for a second. The mayor and Mike and I in chief were at the latest school road meeting, which was last Wednesday. were at the latest school road meeting, which was last Wednesday, and they're working hard, but they still have just over a thousand feet of the road that they haven't laid any pipe in, and they haven't done any asphalt work, and the asphalt plants close down about the first week of November on a normal winter. So it's gonna be very close. If the asphalt plants close down and they can't get any asphalt, they have no contingency plan in place to keep a plant open, so that would mean that the project goes through the winter. We would need to be, so our contingency plan on this, and what we're asking the council for permission to do, is basically do what we would normally do on our roads, out on J-Highway, all the way down J-Highway to one hundred and ninety-fifth, and then normally we don't do anything on one hundred and ninety-fifth between J-Highway and School Road. We lower the blades again at School Road going westbound, because that is our responsibility. We'd be asking that that L, that very large L, you allow us to go ahead and kind of double up on, especially in the smaller events, when school is not closed, that could get a little bit hairy out there, so.
This is an example of tracking one of our snowplows, thank you. It shows, it kind of shows breadcrumbing, which allows us to track the location. This shows a vehicle that's left the Public Works, Public Works barn and is headed to Foxhaven to start working on the residential routes. And then after a period of time, you can see that the trucks have, the truck has been through Pell and Path, Huntsman, and then the local roads. We hope to, at some point, have this available on the website for the general public, but we're really kind of debugging and shaking out the GPS system. We are having trouble. Sometimes the GPS units kind of shut off on their own, and so we're really looking at this season to be kind of a debugging system and season and using it internally. What, going on to, we, the only, we get a lot of calls about you did not, you have not plowed my street, and really, we have. It's just what level of service it is. We do not have a clear pavement policy, except for Fifty-Eight Highway. That is the only road that we will make extensive efforts to have down to clear pavement, and that is, that's just because of the volume of traffic that travels on that route. You'll see, this is a typical, what we consider a good level of service for the Level Two routes, which are kind of some of the collectors and some of the residential collectors. They are, the lanes will be partially snow-covered, but still in a good travel condition. Local roads, just because of the period of time and lapse before we are able to get to them, they do get traffic on them, they do get snow-packed. We do the best effort we can to get them plowed, but really, snowpack is a safe, reasonable driving surface for those local roads. In any snowfall event, we do have unavoidable impacts. There will be windrows across driveways. There will be blocked access to mailboxes, and those are the property owner's responsibilities to clear. Occasionally, we will have damage to mailboxes. A lot of it is the wooden posts have rotted and just are not able to withstand. The plows don't hit them, it's the snow. I mean, we still get, we still get calls about the plows hitting it. It's really the snow and the windrows coming off the plow, so we will replace that. And then on curves, there is occasionally some sod and sprinkler damage.
You needed to add one more to that, and that is sidewalks are blocked whenever you open up the streets. That's an unavoidable, because you can't walk on the sidewalks because they're on both sides.
And it was mentioned earlier, everybody loves cul-de-sacs. Everybody loves cul-de-sacs, except about seven to ten times a year. One of our, one of the biggest challenges is where do we put the snow? You know, we encounter mailboxes, we encounter fire hydrants, we encounter driveways, and the gaps where we are able to try and push the snow is where we encounter parked cars. So we do do our best to, this kind of example of, we do do our best to move the snow around a little bit and kind of push it to the open areas. Unfortunately, when we're doing that, we do get windrows into the driveways. There may be a little excessive snow into the driveways, but it's really unavoidable. And this kind of shows our first pass-through, what we ultimately will do is the truck will turn around and then push the rest of the way out. If there's no parked cars in the cul-de-sac, which is very rare, we will try and go around the cul-de-sac and do the outer perimeter and then leave some center, some snow in the middle, but a lot of times, we are encountering parked cars, and we end up dealing with it this way. And then we occasionally get questions on what's the upcoming winter, and I did find this from the Farmer's Almanac, says we're gonna be cold and dry. I've also seen some that say we have a fifty percent potential of having more snow and a fifty percent potential of having less snow this year, so.
Well, that's a fairly accurate forecast based on what I've seen on TV, so.
So, with that, I am available for questions, questions or comments.
Before we get into the questions, I love the animation. Well done.
Well, I can't take credit for that. I probably stole that from another community that told me it was award-winning and very popular, so I think they are prepared to give that out to others.
Councilmember Morehead, then Kellard?
Well, Mr. Crash, I know this happens every year, but the question is, do you have enough trucks to be able to handle this load? I mean, you know, I know that in budget times, we've talked about need and want, and, you know, I mean, because I know I always get the call from the citizen going, why can't you guys just buy one more truck? Of course, that means one more driver, you know, there's lots of other costs there. But, I mean, do you feel that we've adequately armed you to be able to attack this?
I think the one thing, the one thing that we do do, and the only thing we really need to supplement right now, is we do rent, occasionally rent a loader to clear intersections. Following progress that other cities are making, and, you know, we do, you know, I think we're right in, right now, today, we are in the kind of the sweet spot where everybody else is, being able to clear the streets in twenty-four hours. Even the big six-inch blizzards we had, you know, the big one we had last year, where we had kind of changed and reacted and changed our snow removal technique to the one, to the two passes, just to keep folks traveling, we were still cleared in thirty, the roads were totally cleared within thirty-six hours, and we were, I think, passable on most of the routes in under twenty. So I think, again, that's pretty quick when we're looking at what other, what other cities are doing and experiencing. So I think at this time, we've got, we've got pretty much everything, everything covered.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of a, Derek beat me to the punch there, and I appreciate it. But, kind of further on that same topic, is there any, has there been any thought, consideration, or kind of looking outside of the box of what we normally do? Is there, in the context of, is there any kind of new technology out there that might be of interest to us that staff may have been afraid to ask for in times past?
Well.
Or, you know, because I want to know that there's, I'm sorry, Mike. I just want to make sure that the folks are armed with, you know, the best that we can afford to give them, you know, so they can provide that service that we're expecting, you know. But I, if we are only allowing them to do so much with what they have, you know, that really falls back to, you know, the council not funding it. So, that's my question. Is there something out there that staff may know about that we haven't approached yet?
The only thing that we have, that we have kicked around a little bit, and Belton is actually putting one in service these years, so I want to see how it works, is a dump truck with a wing plow on it, which is another, which is another drop-down, it's a drop-down plow. One of the concerns we have with it is if we only have one, can we dedicate, how does that, to just dedicate it to the multi-lane roads? We have some real reluctance, and that's why I want to see what happens with Belton. It's an additional width to the truck, you know, we depend on those trucks to be in the residential streets. I'd really like to see what the performance is, you know, being in the narrow streets with parked, with parked cars before we bring that forward. I mean, every other year or so, we seem to get a dump truck hooked in a tire rut, and we clip a car. Just having that additional weight hanging there, even though it's folded back, may have some, may have some input, impacts there. So, yeah, there is, there is some things there that could add to some efficiencies on our multi-lane roads. Just want to kind of, kind of sit back and see, since Belton's putting one in service, what their, what their track record is with it before we, before we move forward and making, making a request to see if that's appropriate for us.
And possibly one of the other items that may come up, and it's a little bit, it's not nearly as fun as that thing. You may have all read that many, many cities on the east side of the state, Cindy, how many was it, ninety? Salt is going to be unavailable. They have always bought their salt under contract from Morton, bringing it up to the river, and Morton wrote them all and just said, we're not gonna provide it next year. Knowing they're in violation of contract, what are you gonna do? So, they don't have salt. Led to a little bit of discussion between Mike and Cindy and I relative to the fact that we've got a dome, and we fill it with nine hundred tons, but it's not completely full by virtue of the fact that, like, when you're looking at an hour class, it goes down, it spreads out, you can't get into the dome. So they do make a track loader that goes up into the door of the dome that allows you to put a considerable amount of salt into that dome. We currently are under contract for salt, but if it starts to look like things are getting tight, but we can still get orders in, we could possibly next year, if this thing starts to spread out into two years, in addition to the piece of equipment Mike is talking about, be coming to you all, asking for one of these track loaders for the dome as well.
Councilmember Westcott?
Gonna make a comment and then a question. So just so I understand, the school road project that was supposed to be done a month ahead of time is now looking like it's gonna have a five-month delay, and we're gonna be responsible for this thing being shut down over the winter. So that...
Possibly. They are still, they're hopeful that they'll be able to get done. They're still giving us the date of the first week of November being done. We're coming into the last week of October right now, and with a thousand feet of pipe, we're just trying to figure out how they're gonna do all that. We queried them extensively. They said that this last thousand feet compared to the first eighteen-hundred to two-thousand feet is a much easier installation line. We're watching it every day.
So, if they don't get it done, then how much extra expense are we going to incur to do that L? And with salt being at a bit of shortage on the east part of the state, do we have enough salt to also cover that, which we hadn't anticipated?
We're currently under contract, so we would have enough salt. I don't know how much we'd use on that. It would depend on the event, as always. The big, the big areas that are going to have to get hit, which we do one of them now, is for the students who are going eastbound on Huback Hill, wanting to turn right on to J-Highway, there's the hill. And that's a mess every single year. We occasionally get called out by MoDOT to assist in their efforts on that hill, which we always comply with, primarily because there's usually an accident there, so everybody's got to pitch in. I think the bigger issue would be, we'd be putting down, down at the one hundred and ninety-fifth Street intersection, and then down one hundred and ninety-fifth Street, I'd say that's a quarter of a mile. Oh, I'm sorry, almost a mile, rather. So that would be the area that we would be hitting that we're not currently.
Sure. I mean, we could, we could limit, you know, if we do that, we could just do the intersections at the stop sign. We don't need to put product down the full mile. That's a fairly, fairly flat route. To treat, to treat.
I look over there.
The hill on J-Highway, I estimate maybe, maybe, I could get it for you, but it's not a lot. It's not like a full load. I mean, we put down two hundred pounds per quarter mile or something like that. But I can, we can give you an estimate of it, I think, but we're weighing, like Jim said, our fear is you get that one kind of, as schools letting out, little grease on the road is really what, what we're concerned about.
The only thing that I'm gonna add is the school is aware of it, too. So they are gonna be just as antsy as we are, if not more so. Councilmember Huback?
For two years now, I've had complaints from the people in Maplewood, especially on South Franklin Street, because the street is not plowed through until after the crossroads are. If, the only way we have of getting out is going east and west on Fifty-Eight Highway. And what is happening in Maplewood is they are going down some of the side streets rather than what we call kind of like the collector streets. In other words, the crews are not going straight on north to hit Fifty-Eight Highway, and they were wanting to know why. Because what was happening, they were, the streets that were being fixed or plowed were going east and west instead of north to the Fifty-Eight in order for them to get to work. And they wanted to know what they had to do in order to get the so-plows to come. They're not asking to be first in line, but they're asking to be first before, as a kind of a collector street, before the side streets are used. Can you see that in there? And I know several of them had said that Franklin runs all the way from Lucy Webb to Fifty-Eight, and if they can get through one, they can get through the other. But sometimes they can't get, Franklin isn't done until the side roads are, so they can't get to work. And they said, they made the comment that it was difficult, especially when school was out and the children were at home, the buses wouldn't be running, so there'd be no reason why they couldn't go north and south roads to get to Fifty-Eight in order to get into work. And so I said I would bring it up and make you aware of the proposition. I will have to say this, in the past, when I was postmaster, they, the businesses in Raymore were the last to be plowed out, because we had to go down to, one week we had to go down to Madison Street and personally drag up every mail sack up to the post officer on Pine, because the city would not plow that street out so that we could get the mail. They said it wasn't important, more important to get the people into Kansas City than it was locally. I haven't forgotten that.
James?
Yeah, I just had a comment. Something, maybe it just mean me last year, but one of the things I know I appreciated, and several other people made the comments on, was what was perceived to be the proactive stance of the Public Works Department, especially seeing the brine come out pre-event. You know, you see the stripes on the road, and especially those smaller events where it's just a light ice glazing, made a big difference, and people really appreciated that. So I applaud you on those efforts. I mean, even through the neighborhoods, you know, we'd see it coming through our streets. And as much of a weather freak as I am, it's like, oop, I missed that one. They're anticipating something coming within the next two days. So that's, I think that's great stuff, Mike, and thank you.
Mike, could we drop some of that brine off outside his house just randomly?
Mr. Fairborn, you know, one of the things that last year, because I noticed that the different method used last year was very effective, but the continual problem I actually see is not the effort of the trucks. And I normally don't talk bad about residents, but especially in the redlined areas, you'll get an idiot who has a car sitting out in the road in one of the redlined roads with a completely empty driveway, because they want to make sure they plow their driveway gets shoveled properly. But I just feel, because I see the trucks fighting and struggling to work around people's cars, do we not have something in place, and maybe this is for Chief Zimmerman as well, in... in place that allows us to either require or to tow cars that are disrupting this process? Because that's part of what, I mean, every person in a cul-de-sac in, in my ward, I have to look at and say, you know, part of the problem is the trucks just can't get there quick enough, but it's not their fault. It's actually another resident, to be honest with you. If they'd have put their cars in the driveway, we wouldn't, the trucks could have maybe got to them quicker. Thoughts?
Well, I think we, we have kind of two, two levels with that. Um, and maybe we need to utilize, maybe we need to do, have a discussion about utilizing them more. What we have done is, on the events, uh, the smaller events, the one to three-inch events, we really, and my guys appreciate your sentiments as well because they do tend to complain about that a little bit. We, we really don't, we don't, we've got some trouble areas where we will do a code red. There's some chronic areas where there's, where there's parking, and the guys have identified that. And we'll, we do a code red phone call, kind of like the severe thunderstorm, and ask folks to, to move, um, move their vehicles. And for the most part, we get a lot of, we do get a lot of compliance. If we're, if we're seeing a, predicted to a much heavier event, we'll, we'll do a city, we'll do a citywide phone call. And that's our first level. And we get, we do get a lot of compliance with, with that. We, we do not have an automatic, no parking on the snow routes ordinance, the way it's, it's written right, the way it's written, the mayor has to declare, and it's a parking, it's really a parking ordinance. The mayor has to declare an emergency, we have to publicize it, and then we can, and then we can tow, if necessary. With cooperation with the police department, um, I think they really like knocking on people's doors and waking them up and having them move their vehicles in lieu of, in lieu of towing, because we tend to, we, we work very closely with public safety during those events and they will respond fairly quickly and knock on doors and get cars moved. So, I don't recall ever having to actually, although it is allowed, to actually get it to rise to the level of having to someone tow it.
But, as you indicated, calling PD, getting PD out, getting, rousting people out of bed, if you will, does take a little bit of time, and each one of those is a slowdown, no question.
Do, hey, do we ticket the non-compliant ones? I mean, I, I know that we try to take a gentle approach to, you know, having them move, but do we actually, you know, because I would, I would bet that, um, you know, we ask them once and they don't do it, and then they receive a ticket. Um, I would think they might be a little more motivated to get it moved the next go-around.
I, I tell you, I have been very impressed with the response that we have gotten when we've, when we've put the phone call out, um, like, like on Sunset. I mean, there's times, you know, we, we do the call, there are, there's no cars parked on Sunset whatsoever. Cars get off of Granada. We've had, those are some of the chronic ones, you know, there's, there's a curve as you get to the west end of Granada. Occasionally, there's one car there that needs to be, needs to be moved when we've, when we've put the call, uh, call out. But, I, the times I've ridden with the trucks after that, for the, the vast majority of the streets are cleared. We might have one or two snowbirds, but it's not enough that we can't, we can't work around it. And really, if they leave it on the street and we're dealing with a six or eight-inch snowfall, they've got snow up to their doorknobs when they come out in the morning, just, just out of the virtue of the amount of snow we're pushing. So, we really question why they don't move their vehicles. But, again, it's, it's a, compared to where it is today where you see cars parked, we get a lot of compliance with our request to move the vehicles.
The other thing I would actually mention to all the council members is that when I actually took the opportunity to ride along with a snowplow, it was very, very enlightening. Uh, you know, everything from, you know, being cussed at to, you know, things thrown at us as we were driving by. So, I, I actually recommend that everybody do that so that you truly have a, a full understanding of what goes on.
The Congress, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I would just add very quickly that, uh, this is the kinder, gentler Mike when it comes to snowfall. If you don't know, Mike is from Minnesota, so he, he's come a long way from where, unless there's six inches out there.
I was going to say, six inches, that's nothing. We're going to walk to school. And then, uh, we, we have item three, having to do with sunshine again.
Thank you.
One of, one of the things we'd like to ask council to consider, because we are seeing it more, more and more frequently, uh, is the snow removal of the, the kind, the snow removal on commercial properties. We're, we're seeing where that is really kind of post, post-event hindering our, our operations. You know, we'll get, for example, we'll get 58 Highway cleared here and we'll get Foxridge cleared at 58 Highway. And then, the contract parking lot plows will push snow out into the street. Uh, we chronically will lose a lane of traffic on Foxridge there, right by Dairy Queen. And a couple of years, frequently, the intersection of Granada and Foxridge gets to be impassable. We'll lose half a lane on 58 Highway, and it means we've got to go, you know, the, not only is it for the safety of the traveling public, but the guys are kind of in shutdown mode and then all of a sudden, we've got to go run routes again because we've got to clear, clear, uh, lanes. And not only that, but it takes up our stores, snow storage space, you know, if, because we have to push it up and then we lose, we lose, um, storage areas and we then may have to, you know, rent a loader to clear things out, things like that. So, we are, we are asking consideration to modify the right-of-way ordinance to include, include a paragraph. We already have some obstruction language, you know, you can't place obstructions in the right-of-way. But what is, what is missing is specifically something that says you can't deposit snow and ice on the, on the roads. And we would like council's consideration to include that in the ordinance and, and, uh, we've provided you some draft or, language from, from the city of Raytown.
I didn't see whose hand went up first, so we're going to say it was, uh, Mr. Boehner's. Well, but you don't get to go first often.
That's my own fault, actually, but, uh, I, I wonder, uh, I, I agree with this. I wonder if in, in, uh, sorting out the language for this, if we also oughtn't, uh, shouldn't put in, uh, the language there a requirement for, um, onsite storage of that snow, so that it, um, not, not only is it, is it stopped from going somewhere, but they're also required a, it has to stay on the property?
Uh, who is? Okay, you're, you're next in line, and then we'll go to.
Thank you. Just to clarify, are, are you, you talking about not allowing businesses to push the snow into a city right-of-way? Or is this talking about not allowing them to push it into the street, or both?
It's actually, it's actually both, because their operation of pushing it to the right-of-way, for example, as they cross perpendicular to the street, they'll leave windrows. They don't necessarily always clean up those windrows, they can be quite deep. Especially at like Foxridge and 58, they then get tracked and spread out and then we end up with, with ice lenses, ice lenses there that we have to deal with. So, there, it's two components. One is storing the snow in the right-of-way, two is depositing the snow on the, on the street, which is by virtue of plowing perpendicular to the road, you end up with windrows on the street.
Would this apply to residential areas also, or just the business districts?
At, at this time, it would be only business districts.
Okay.
The, uh, and a real good example of it, sir, is right here. Um, and our own emergency vehicles, the, the urgent care fitness center area, their, their exit for their plow, they take it all from all of those parking lots and then they try to push it across the street into the right-of-way. Well, you get the windrows, whi, which are in a heavy snow, one to two feet high after we've plowed, and then they can't get it, when there's a very, very heavy snow, they can't get it all up onto the sidewalk area there on the south side of the street. So, it starts to come out, it backs up on them. Last year, during the second big snowfall event, the entire, the entire eastbound lane was blocked and a component of the westbound lane was also being filled with about a six-inch high, or a six-foot-high pile of snow that it just backed up on. And that's our own vehicles trying to get in and out.
You know, we, we make, um, other contractors actually register with the city. Um, are these, uh, commercial snow removal, um, contractors, are they registered with the city?
Yes. That, let me rephrase. They're supposed to be registered with the city. You know, some of them get in, get out. We can't guarantee that they're necessarily being registered with the city. But, we get a significant number that, that are actually in. A lot of them are lawn care services during the summer, so we know who they are.
Well, I think, from, uh, watching everybody, I'm, I'm seeing nodding heads in the affirmative, so.
We will bring it to you with the, the amendment.
Okay, great. Councilmember Hubock?
I want to make sure I'm understanding everything right. Take for instance Johnston Parkway and, um, Jay, uh, 58 Highway. You're mowing both, I mean, you're mowing, you're plowing all the way through there. So, how do, where do you put the snow? All right? You, you go down, um, 58 first and you move it all on there. Then when you're coming down, uh, Johnson, you push it across, what? You push it on down south of 58 Highway then? How do you get rid of it at that intersection so that it's not blocking one of the others? I'm not sure I understand.
We will, we'll, you're right, we will leave a windrow, but then we have a cleanup truck that will come and push it, push the snow to the corners. What we're talking about is the, the snow that comes off of the commercial parking lots that they are pushing out onto the street and stacking up on the right-of-way and leaving snow on the, on the roads.
Like on Johnston, on either side where one leads to the bank and the other leads to the grocery store, they're putting it out there, you cleared it out, and then they're pushing it back out.
Yes, ma'am.
I see.
All right. Well, thank you, Mike. Um, we have an executive session to go into next, unless there's any other things that need to be brought up. Okay? We'll, we'll stay here to go an executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we go into executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized by 610.O21 Subsection 3.
We have a motion and a second. And we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubock? Councilmember Kellogg? Councilmember Stevens? Councilmember Wesco?
Aye.
Councilmember Abdelewad?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
All righty, we'll wait until we have confirmation that.